I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7 o'clock PM on June 14th, 2022. And we have a full board with Richard Bremlis, Andrew Allard, Jennifer Gill, and Peter Crusoe, our Town Administrator. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to be starting with Executive Session again because we have some things to talk about back there that we will talk about again later in the agenda, but we need to have some alignment first. So I will move that the Board of Selectmen enter into Executive Session per Massachusetts General Law, C30A 21A2, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Please fire Chief and others. I further move that the Board of Selectmen enter into Executive Session per Massachusetts General Law, C30A 21A3, to discuss strategy relative to pending litigation, BMRSD/Milville versus NV5 et al., where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? I'll do a real call vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. So we'll be back shortly. Thank you. Okay, so we resume our meeting out of Executive Session. So announcements, Peter?
None.
Okay. Correspondents?
So we have the KP Law
Yep.
increase. Their rates are going from 210 to 230. We've been at 210 for a number of years. So there's a letter in there just explaining their increase. It seems reasonable.
Okay.
So there's that. Separately, it came in actually in the 48 hours, so whether you do it here or now was
We can do it now.
Now? Okay, so I have for each of you correspondence, which is an email that I got and to which I responded from Resident Jennifer Wing regarding the last session regarding the Finn matter. And we also, and there is an email from Ms. Bowen regarding a gesture she made at that meeting, so.
Yeah.
That's what you have there.
Yeah, so the evening, the email from Mrs. Wing states, "Good evening, Mr. Crusoe. I am running to see if the boss will be taking up the matter of a person in the boss meeting on Monday night using the middle finger." It was actually Tuesday night. "We sat for over 47 minutes about why it was so wrong, the apology, and how there were no acceptable excuses for this behavior. This board has high standards," in quotes, "and I hope they ask Mrs. Bowen to step down from the Friends of the Senior Center Group after her behavior during a public meeting. She was heard and seen throughout the meeting and discussed with Mr. Finn and his actions while sitting in the audience. She then takes to the microphone to do the exact same action toward Mr. Finn while saying, 'It's not nice.' She continued the action upon leaving the table. The chair asks that no one do the action ever again at the meeting. Mrs. Bowen replied, 'Oh, I just did it. Ha ha,' and stated she was just too demonstrative. I look forward to seeing the boss continue their high standards and not hypocrisy. I will be checking future agendas for this topic. Jennifer Dean-Wing." And then we got a response from Mrs. Bowen, because I shared it with her. And she stated, "Is with great humility, I offer the Board of Selectmen my apology for replicating an obscene gesture recently made at a public meeting several weeks ago by Jerry Finn. My intent was to demonstrate to Mr. Finn just how shameful his behavior was. In addition, I did express how sorry I was that this unfortunate behavior ever occurred for Mr. Finn, who I have known for many years. In closing, I can honestly say my repeating the gesture was not done in anger nor directed to anyone in malice. I therefore am writing this letter of apology to you and the local cable viewers for any misunderstanding resulting from this incident. Thank you for your patience. Signed Ellen Bowen, Milva resident for 85 years." So based on those two things, Peter sent an email. "Good afternoon. This is addressed to Mrs. Wing. Thank you for expressing your comments and concern. Please note the senior club is an ad hoc private group that has no direct affiliation within the town. As such, Mrs. Bowen's actions were as a private citizen over which the board has no authority and were well within her First Amendment rights. She cannot be held to the same standards as a duly sworn in or elected or appointed member of a Town of Milville Board or Committee. That said, is my understanding that she has apologized to the board for her demonstrative gesture. Accordingly, I believe as far as the Board of Selectmen are concerned, the matter merits no further action. Best regards, Peter Crusoe, Town Administrator." And this will be the only action we are taking. Meeting minutes?
Yep, so you have the minutes of May 2nd and May 16th in there for
Yep. Okay. So I actually only had issues with the May 2nd meeting minutes.
Okay.
So the first one was on page 2 of May 2nd. So it talks about the appointment of Edward Novio, but not Erin Zimmerman. Her name is missing there because we appointed both people that evening. And then
Very good, yep.
And then
In the motion.
In the motion, yep.
Yep.
And then the second was Article 12. So this is page, sorry, they're not numbered, 4. It says, "On a motion made by Andrew Allard, seconded by Richard Bremlis, the board voted unanimously to not approve Article 12." But I don't know if it was unanimously because it only has me and Andrew as nays. I think it was 1 to 2? Because that's on the stipends, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So those are the two things that I saw for meeting minutes.
Okay.
On the May 2nd ones. And I didn't see anything on May 16th, but Andrew's the better editor, so. Andrew, did you see anything?
Yeah, so for the May 2nd ones, I did have a few.
Oh, you have FUMO, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
So the Article 8 was just repeated twice. I don't know, so that was there. And then if we could just move the, right underneath the Article 8, it has a little snippet from the Town Administrator, and then underneath that, there's another line. Recommend to not put a number on Article 10. So should we put that with Article 10 as well, just to make it simpler?
Make it seamless, yep.
Okay, and then Okay, and then for Article 16, we might just want to bold the font for that, considering that was a motion, and all the others are.
Did you have anything on May 16th?
Oh, okay. Yes, so for May 16th. So I was wondering should we put in the
Oh.
I don't know.
Do you want to put in there that someone made an obscene gesture in the meeting minutes? I don't know. What do you think?
Technically, it's the official record, but I don't know.
Gee.
I was wondering that too.
I think you covered it in what you just did tonight.
Yeah, I think there'll be a whole nother meeting about it.
I mean, somebody got up and spoke and made gestures, but you don't necessarily say all the things that everybody says, nor do you describe the gestures that people make, even sitting here. If somebody's scratching their head, but you did address the matter.
At the 7th meeting. And tonight.
At the 7th meeting, but what you did tonight covers, I think, what Andrew's talking about. I don't know, so
I don't know, it was just a thought I had seen.
Depends on how you, your level of comfort. I don't know that you need to get into that.
Yeah. I agree. We have, because the June 7th meeting minutes will
Yeah, it was just a thought I had seen, so.
Go into lots of detail.
That's right.
Yep. And then for the, so on page 4, vote on fusion laser. It just has me as seconding it when it was Ms. Gill who had motioned, and then Richard Bremlis who had seconded the motion. So that just needs to be changed.
So the names are incorrect, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Jennifer made it, and Richard's. How do you remember that?
I remember that.
Well, I read it and I saw it, so then I rewatched the meeting at that point then. Just to double check it.
But Andrew was under protest because he thought, set a bad precedent. He said that in the meeting. So he voted no. Okay. Richard, did you have anything that Andrew and I haven't mentioned yet?
No, that looks pretty straightforward.
Okay.
It's really just that change of that motion on this one.
Yep.
I think the sec, the one of the second, we'll come back to you on the 11th, I think, just so you see all that.
Okay, so we don't, okay, so we'll just do the 16th?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the, of Monday, May 16th, 2022, with the noted correction.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye, okay. Do you want us to sign the signature page and then?
Sure.
Okay. I have one that's not stapled. Okay, so moving right along. Get all these out of the way. So I see nothing in Department, so I'll move to new business. So we have Mr. Robert Brown and then a couple of members of the Finance Committee. If you all want to come up, you're more than welcome to, Aubrey and Halkay.
Bob, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Aubrey, I do.
Yeah, Aubrey, we have one in here for you.
I have one.
So on the agenda, Bob, I have Audit Report 2020, which you have, and I have, and then of course the Management Letter of Comments, which were in two forms, right?
Yes.
This is Bob Brown, our famous CPA, who's served us well in years past, and then came back on board for the 2019, 20, 21 audits, and you all signed off on three more years. And he's kept the rates with no change, and that's very kind of his father.
It's very impressive. Thank you.
We're always hoping for the best. The 20 audit resulted in three reports. There's audited financial statements with our opinion on the financial statements. It was a clean opinion. The statements in this package are prepared according to generally accepted accounting principles. So the statements in here don't really look much like the statements that are sent to the DOR for your free cash. It's a full accrual statements. There's multiple sets of statements here, actually. The first three pages are full accrual, so it has your fixed assets, your debt, full accrual receivables, your pension liability, your OPEB liability, bonds, debt. The net position overall was a plus 7.9 million. 6.7 million of that is essentially due to fixed assets minus the debt related to it. But it is an overall plus, which is a good thing because there's many communities that are actually in the negative, even on the overall, because of pension and OPEB liabilities. The unrestricted is in the negative, which is not a surprise because of the full accrual basis. So the full accrual statements are on 13. It's essentially a balance sheet on page 13, and then a two-page P and L on a full accrual basis. Page 16 looks a little bit like what is submitted to the Department of Revenue. You have a general fund column. This is essentially on a cash basis. They call them modified accrual, but there's really not much accrual going on. But instead of having special revenue funds, capital projects funds, and trust funds that are maintained on the town's ledgers for generally accepted accounting principles, they allocate, combined into one non-major fund, unless you have one item that is significant enough to separate out because it's more than 10% of assets, liabilities, revenue, or expenses in that grouping. And Title V qualified for that because of the cash and the receivables pertaining to them. That's followed by a P and L on the same basis, general fund, Title V, and all other funds. There's a couple reconciliation pages that show how you go from the cash basis statements to the full accrual, whether it be based on the fund balance or the net P and L for the year. So you get a listing there of all the changes that are made to full accrual, which is mainly the items I mentioned before. Then there's also another set of statements, fiduciary funds. These are completely separate for the post-employment benefits trust and your agency fund. Sorry, I skipped a page. We actually consider 20 to be the most important statement. It's the budget statement for the general fund because that's what towns live by. You know, their voted budget at annual town meeting. And for that year, there was a net plus of about $160,000 based on excess revenue or closed budgets.
And that would be essentially our free cash for that year?
It would contribute to the free cash.
Okay.
There were other factors, like if you had unspent free cash still, you know, that would add to the balance. There were two other reports issued. One is a communication of internal control, and the other is a management letter. They're very similar. The communication of internal control mentions internal controls that are deficient, that could have a material effect on the financial statements of the town. The management letter has a couple similar comments, but it's in a separate report because those particular areas would not result in a material statement in your statements. One's required by generally accepted accounting standards to be issued because of material weaknesses. The other is more of a tradition. Before there was this, there was always a tradition of management letters.
Yep.
The material items in the internal control report are mainly, they're all similar in that there are certain procedures that should be done on a monthly basis to balance accounting with the treasurer and/or collector. The first item on page 2 has to do with cash and investments. Certainly, that should be reconciled on a monthly basis. If there's a difference, you know, that if there was a beginning difference and the difference changed, that should be immediately pursued. So if you, if you have a historical variance, you keep it the same every month. And once that's historically the same for several months, then you make decisions on adjusting it. But certainly, cash and investments totals between accounting and treasury should be reconciled on a monthly basis, you know, by the end of the next month, generally. That was page 2 of that report. Page 3 has to do with real estate taxes. Obviously, real estate taxes are a major receivable of the town, so that makes it a material weakness if this isn't being reconciled on a monthly, on a timely basis as well. The management letter on page 2 had a similar comment, but it's for personal property taxes. Personal property taxes, if that was way off, it still would not be material to financial statements of the town, so it's in the management letter. Page 3, same with Title V, should be reconciled on a monthly and timely basis. These really weren't being reconciled at all between accounting and it involves assessors' office as well because they keep some of the receivable records. But certainly, we have quite a few special assessments in Title V, and they should be considered a regular receivable and reconciled periodically. And on page 4, it was the same for ambulance. Ambulance was being maintained kind of on a cash basis. We're taking the money and just call it revenue, but receivable isn't on the books. It's not being reconciled to reports, you know, from the service provider. And that should also happen on a monthly, on a timely basis.
So Peter, are we making, have these changes been implemented now?
They haven't been implemented, but they're, they're high on the radar, and that's, efforts are being made. So both of these management letters, I call them both management letters, if that's all right, hit on points which are the primary reason why free cash takes so long, because there's all sorts of catch-up. I think Bob talked about one of the things in the material weakness one, talking about, you know, if you do the cash reconciliations and you find a variance, you want to get on it on a timely basis, you know, get right on it. Otherwise, when you're playing catch-up, which this, we've been doing, now you lost track of what the variance is or how to figure out what it is and how you can fix it. So there's that. So anyway, yeah, we've been behind on that for years, okay? And this relates to 2020.
Yep.
Let's hope when he looks at 21, he'll see some improvement, but I, I don't know that his comments will change much.
They'll still be there, but there may be progress during the year that
That's right.
Has a response.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Yeah. And, and so that's important. And then when he gets to do 22, I think you'll see more. And then our goal is not have these types of things, or new things, if you will, that you would find. Yes, we're plagued also, like the point he makes about the Title V account. That's a, you know, you'll see that, he pointed out in one of these financial statements. That's a separate fund because it's material. And back when we were looking at a negative free cash a year ago, as of 2019, you know, I was struggling, 20, I'm sorry, 2020, I was struggling with DLS to get them to recognize some of that surplus because there's a lot of surplus sitting there as free cash if we could transfer it over. So it's still, again, on my radar, but I hit a brick wall with the folks at DLS.
Right, and we did have an audit adjustment in 20 because the transfer of funds from Title V to support the debt payment of the, from the Clean Water Trust related to the subject pediments wasn't transferred. It was budgeted for, but it didn't get made. So free cash was under-certified by the amount of that transfer in that year.
Yeah.
Do you remember that amount?
Forty grand or forty-two, forty.
Forty-five thousand, around, yeah.
Not insignificant.
No. Our procedure is we match up the entire budget process and the transfers that are called for and make sure they're made as part of the audit.
And if you recall, the omnibus budget, the sources of payment for that, if you will, raise and appropriate the bulk of it. But one of the pieces was to transfer from Title V septic that amount. So one of the reasons that, the argument I've made to DLS of the surplus in the Title V account was there were years where that didn't, wasn't even, the appropriation wasn't made or the motion wasn't made to do that, and so it wasn't being made. And then here we have catch-up, you know, that Bob picked up here. Yeah, the, the other thing, I always use the opportunity on the soapbox while we have this. In the footnotes, I appreciate that Bob agreed to put in Note 15, which is on page 58 of your financial statements. And that one is where we're identifying the importance of our relationship with BMR and the fact that the BMR has significant unfunded debt challenges, mostly legacy debt, as I call it, which is their long-term debt. You know, it's a footnote, but it identifies their long-term debt's 2.7 million. They're, at this date, in 2020, their unfunded OPEB was 34 million. It's now 42 million. And their unfunded pension obligation was about 8 million. They also, in the, in the, sort of the last paragraph, also mentioned the fact that there's another 39 million related to the BMR teachers at the Massachusetts Teachers Retirement Fund. So it's out of your state pockets that that happens. And the contribution made on behalf of the BMR teachers to the pension fund of the teachers was 4.7 million. So there's a lot of legacy debt created out of that operation, which isn't really picked up a lot in operating budget here nor there. And so that, that's fairly, in my mind, that's a significant challenge to the town, particularly where you went through the revisions to the regional agreement. And in that revision, the town assumed the, if you will, cosigned the OPEB obligation. You assumed that the debt should, the BMR dissolve in some fashion. You didn't have that obligation before that regional agreement changed.
Your statement in net position doesn't include potential liabilities from the district.
Yeah.
So.
So I was, I was looking at the notes also. And Note 10 talks about the stabilization funds. And for example, the stabilization fund balance was around $414,000. And as of our special town meeting last week, it's almost $900,000. So we've made, and the public safety went from 210 to 236, somewhere of a modest increase. The capital stabilization went from $332 to $206,000. And then OPEB is, went from 42,000 at this time to 192. So our Milville's OPEB is funded quite nicely. So that's a lot of things I saw. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments?
I have just a question. So I know you've been doing our financial statements for a number of years. Have you, I'm assuming you've issued this to us in past years as well? Because it's been a number of years that we've had this issue, the internal control issue.
Excuse my care, couldn't hear that one.
Oh, that's okay. In past years, when you've issued financial statements to us, have you given us similar reports on internal control issues?
Same report for fiscal '19.
Fiscal '19, okay. And before that, do you remember?
We didn't know how to
You went through 15, I think, Bob, but you started to do 16, but somehow stopped for whatever reason.
I know we didn't issue a material weakness letter prior to this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know we just discussed it, but this is a big deal, right? So
Yeah.
I know it's one of the things, I, of all the, of all the financial items that we've accomplished as a town, this is the one that continues to plague us, I think. And I think we're all on the same board, but we, on the same page. But I think we just need to, like, really make sure we're making strides and micromanaging monthly reviews, like, even if they're not done perfectly. Making sure they're done, making sure we see them, and trying to get our arms around it because I think that'll help stabilize us further. Thank you for your
Yeah, this was really good. Anyone else?
Perfect, Bob.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a long drive home to Mendon.
Have a good night.
Good to see you.
Okay. Aubrey, Halkay, anything else on the audit or? Okay. Next on the agenda is, we'll take them in order, so it looks like Chief Coop starts.
No, you have FY '22 end of year transfers.
Oh, end of year transfers, oh, yeah, sorry.
And I actually, you have a slightly different version than was in your packet, so I'll hand those over. Aubrey, I'll let you have that.
Hot off the presses.
Hot off the presses, if there's an extra, great. Because what was changed was just one of the sources given recent discussion of recreation department budget, okay. So that was prepared by the accountant, looking at the year-to-date information, right, and seeing where we're at. And as of, basically through the reporting date of 6/12, and also eyeballing what we know about what's likely to come down the pipeline, she then estimated, and I did a review, and in that year packet is my review of the work that she previously did, and she amended some of these. So it really is requiring, you know, some year-end adjustments. One, a couple of grand to assessors, three grand to technology support services. A big number here is the firefighter EMT wages of 38.5, fire other expenses of 6, tree warden $25. Norfolk Aggie 16, we knew about that, right? Townwide gas, 14.5, we knew about the challenge there. Street lighting electricity, 5300, and some Medicare on behalf of employees, 1, 18.50. And so the sources are on the right And so the sources are on the right-hand column where we have extra funds available and unlikely to be needed. And, and so she matched up and I reviewed and we changed some of the matching and sources. And so the question is whether, there still might be some need for transfers that we don't know about of some things that we haven't anticipated. And those would happen on the July 11th meeting, okay? But this is everything we know and can think of at this stage of the game.
So should we vote on approve these tonight or should we do that on July 11th?
Well, I think you should vote and approve on these tonight. And I think Aubrey, your committee will do this set up whenever you schedule a meeting. And I think you can do it based on the, you know, it's, you know, I don't know that you have to need, need to go through each general ledger account. I think you can do based on the attached schedule, mention the total amount of each, you know, that's 85, 175. And if you have questions about anything specific here, you know, where the stresses are that caused the challenges.
So I think this is clear for us, but should we maybe just read these so like for the benefit?
Yes, sure.
So assessors financial services requires $2,000. And so we'll be pulling $2,000 from the town hall bu- building repairs that has the surplus. Technology support services requires $3,000. And we'll be pulling $3,000 from Memorial Park landscaping.
And if I could, just on that one, why we're pulling from Memorial Park landscaping? They have a budget for lawn mowing, but all of that has been captured at the town hall lawn mowing line. So that's why there's free money there.
If you wouldn't mind, could you also just hit on why we need, why we're deficient in assessors and technology? Or remind me if I forgot.
Just some of the needs, I don't know. You know, did we budget properly? I don't think we, you know, do we need more money there? I think if you saw in this year's budget, I upped the, certainly the technology support services. On the assessors.
The assessors continues to just be one that we, year over year, I see problems with.
Yeah, and they're, it's a function of both. There's software needs, right? We saw late, what was it? Yeah, late year bill, yeah, prior year bill on that. So there's that part of it. And then there's their contract. So I don't, I don't recall if we under budgeted their contract. We have budgeted properly for FY '23. I thought we did for FY '22. So I don't know off the top of my head.
Could we have the assessors come to a meeting between now and September to?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
And then one quick question for the, where we're getting the money from the Memorial Park landscaping? Have we made adjustments for this year's budget, right? In those, in the like, because we, I'm assuming we've kept the.
Well, so what we didn't do is we, we didn't, so if you look like at the town hall line item for cutting grass, grounds and property, you know, we're in deficit. But the total town hall budget is surplus. So I don't even call off the top of my head what we budgeted, but I don't think we got to that level of detail. So that we, we'll still have that sort of problem. The question is whether we want to account for it as, you know, we get build a piece that relates to the park, but we're not, you know, adding a third accounting, you know, a code for that gets administratively burdensome. So the simple thing, but so, no.
Just to possibly like remove it and then just add it or?
Yeah, so the way it would happen is to take it out of there and move it here. We haven't done that geography in the budget that I recall.
So I'm going to continue. Firefighter EMT part-time wages has a deficit of 38,500. We'll be pulling 18,000 from the town planner.
If you're looking at the right form I gave you, right? Yep.
Yep. And $20,500 from town hall admin salaries. Fire other expenses is 6,000. And we'll be pulling 6,000 for communication clerk. The tree warden requires 25 whole dollars. And I'll pull that from the treasurer tax title. Norfolk Aggie transportation requires $16,000. We'll pull 3,000 from Memorial Park landscaping, $3,000 from the town planner, and $10,000 from the police department capital lease for a total of $16,000. Townwide gas requires $14,500. The communications clerk will be pulling from the communications clerk $6,000 and pulling $8,500 from communication professional services for a total of $14,500. Street lighting electricity requires $5300. And we'll be pulling $5300 from treasurer tax entitle. Medicare on behalf of employees requires $1,850. And we'll be pulling health insurance on behalf of employees, $1,850. So the total will be $87,175 for year-end transfers. Did anyone have any, I went fast, but does anyone have any questions on any of the other things? Were they, like, why we have it, where they came from?
Yeah, so I have a quick question on firefighter EMT part-time wages. What exactly happened there?
So I think we can get you to the source, but I think they've been doing a lot of training and that's the little bit I know. And I think if you recall, the chief argued that we were probably under budgeting for next year. But, you know, the specifics.
We did, we did increase that significantly though at this year's budget, so.
Which is why we were.
Yeah. So I'm going to staple this paper to my notebook. And next year, if you ask for this much money again, there's going to be problems. So we'll take a look, so, okay.
So.
I don't know if that helps you.
So it's just basically increased training or?
We've, we've just been busier as a department. Mutual aid calls have gone up. So between that and again, we, training has increased on that. I think overall, well, I'm sure we'll get to that when, in moments here. But it's, like I had mentioned in prior meetings, it's that budget, that line item has been underfunded, underfunded for, for years. And even where we sit now going into next fiscal year, it still doesn't cover, if I were to staff, every EMS shift. It's, just is what it is.
I think maybe one thing we just need to be a little bit careful of or aware of is, right, like the townspeople are the ones appropriating the department balances to these amounts. So we really can't like year over year, just go way over budget and then do a year-end transfer. Because that's not really what the year-end transfer process is supposed to be. I know this year was different because we didn't have a special town meeting where we would have done potential budget revisions at that time. We had huge personnel changes. So I think this year maybe is an anomaly, but like generally, I think we need to go back to the townspeople if we're seeing an instance where we need more funding rather than just have, you know, 40,000 here and 20,000 there. Because it's, it's the townspeople's budget, not ours.
And if I, just the other point is that these budgets, you know, the voters approve the department total. And, you know, both the police and the fire department have many lines in their budget, right? This is going to one line in the budget, but it really is impacting, it's the department total. And we know that, yes, you hit on it, there was some personnel changes for which we didn't do a special town meeting adjustment. So that's a factor here. The other factor is these guys got hammered in the, you know, maintenance equation here. So that ate up all of their maintenance line items. So there's, where in prior years, there might have been a little extra play in that sort of thing. So all of the accounts that provided a little offsets to the total, so there was no need for a year-end transfer to fire, there was no, there was no fallback, basically.
Yeah, but I agree with Aubrey. If the town says our fire department budget or our police department or any of our budgets get X dollars and we really want to try to keep within X dollars. If it goes over a little bit, certainly we can manage to that. And, you know, exceptions happen. But I think if we see something extreme, then, you know, we need to revisit what happens in that department because we can't keep coming again and again. So Richard, sure, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. I apologize, I'm out of order or anything. Richard Herto, 8 Rondan Road. I have a question concerning the police or the fire department's budget. When they have mutual aid where they go and put out a fire in North Smithfield, Upbridge, does the town get reimbursed for those hours or? And I, and I may be totally out of line, but it's just a question that I've heard in the past where there was a barn fire. There's something in certain towns. Do we get reimbursed for those hours or is that come out of the town's budget for putting out other fires?
We do not get reimbursed for that. Just like if, when towns come in to provide mutual aid to us, we don't, we don't reimburse them.
I, I just wasn't sure and it sounded, it popped in my head that I thought.
Yeah, so it's a fair point, Richard. But I think if we want to continue to receive mutual aid, we have to kind of give mutual aid. And yeah, I think that.
So it works both ways.
It works both ways. We don't want to get caught with a lack of resources ourselves. So very grateful that we are able to provide mutual aid and we also receive it.
Thank you for answering that question.
So anytime. Just Chief Coop?
I, I just want to say also, we rely heavily at the police department on mutual aid. Sure, we give it, but without these agreements.
Works both ways.
Without these agreements, you can be in trouble sometimes.
Yes, so very grateful for mutual aid from Millville, happy to provide it at all times. Okay. So anything else or should we vote to, voting for a motion?
Motion.
Do you have any other question?
No, no.
Okay.
Motion to transfer the amount of, should I just do the gen, the total, right?
Yeah, I would, I would refer to the attached list or the list as presented in the total and you're probably covered.
So motion to approve the amounts in the table in the amount of $87,175.
Thank you, Andrew. Looking for a second, thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Okay, all's in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. Okay, great.
And so we'll have you sign off on one of those, a clean one, maybe if I haven't signed this one.
I wrote it on mine.
Oh, wow, there you go.
Okay. Here's the, the 16th, I think, so one of them.
One of the things too is the, when we get really good about doing the book to cash reconciliations every month, then this kind of stuff will pop up and we can have discussions about it. So I know we've, some of these, we've been having discussions about for a while and.
Won't be a surprise. As it has been.
And I do think the assessor one specifically, I'll ask a couple of questions through email and see if we can get some answers before income. But that one just seems to be one that we always run into problems with either over budget or prior bill or something. Thanks, thanks for inviting us.
Thank you.
Sorry we couldn't perform tonight.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Are we now ready to put Chief One and Chief Two in the hot seat? We'll start with Chief Number One, Chief Coop.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Coop.
Spotlight, right? We're going to bring that over.
I'm just looking, I screenshot of the question, yeah, so this one's yours. Okay. So Chief Coop, did you have a statement you wanted to read first or did you just want to jump in?
Just in case, a couple of things I just want to be reminded about.
Okay. So how the process is going to work tonight? So we reviewed the contracts earlier today, that's why we started with executive session. And we gave Peter a few more things to look into. So we'll have a conversation tonight, provided things go well, we can approve appointments. And then Peter will come back after he's spoken with the attorneys. It may require another review of the contract, so that's what I'm saying. So we might not be able to go forward with the contracts until the July 11th meeting. But we've had this in a acting role since September, right? So that's.
Roughly.
Yeah.
October.
October, so we need to move things around. September, thank you, Chief Coop. I already like him for saying that I'm right and Peter is wrong. Coop one, Peter zero.
I am going to double check.
No, I think it was, it was September when we started the process, so we had to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. So I have the questions that I kind of put together. I don't know if you, I'm happy to go first or if someone else wants to start. I feel like I always start. So if someone else wants to start, totally fine. Okay, I will start. So Chief Coop, kind of just some opening questions. Can you tell us why you want to be the chief and give us an overview of your certifications and background and things like that?
So I have a great group of guys here. I mean, the guys that are here are loyal, they're respectful. They help me get things done. You know, you're in a small town here, you got to rely on their help too. I mean, I don't care what anybody says, no one person is going to know everything, you know? I think doing this job has been and will continue to be both a challenge and an honor. The top seat in any business or agency, that's a great honor there. I came to Millville to live here in 2005 because I wanted to get my kids into a better school district and, you know, and my wife and I decided we were going to move here long before I came to work here. And we're still here. So that's why I'm just, I'm hoping that I can continue to provide for the community. And I don't know what more I can say about it at this point. I've got 30 years in law enforcement, well more than half my adult life. 13 of those years supervisory positions within two departments, which are vastly different, but I think it helps me deal with what we do here also. Because I do have access to the surrounding towns for resources when I need something. But also it shows me that you have to manage at times. And that's what I try and, that's what I try and inspire in the guys that work here, that sometimes we just have to, you know, get by. The guys are not here because they're trying to make a million bucks. The guys that remain here, the guys are here because, you know, they're loyal to the town and they realize. So. And I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice where I, when I just cleaned that up a few years ago, got some management and business classes sprinkled in there. And I just, when I can, I try to learn on my own to do these things. And I think I've been doing okay for the past nine months.
Okay, do you have an example of a classroom thing that you've taken in particular since you were put in the position of acting chief?
Well, I take all my in-service classes, but I haven't, I haven't, I've been looking. For example, I saw a budgeting class that was offered through the state. Unfortunately, two of the three remote classes fell when I went on a vacation to see my son in Texas last year. So I really couldn't count on myself to be able to get on there remotely when we don't see my son that much. We went out to Texas to see him, so I didn't want to take the opportunity. I've been looking for classes like that, just to make sure that I can be abreast of those situations, you know?
Okay. What are the challenges the department is facing and how would you overcome them?
So three of them, three of the major challenges right now are the Bridge Academy, which is a condensed version of a full-time academy, which allows, it could allow any of my remaining seven part-timers to attend like 340 hours, most of which is remote. It could allow them to be a full-timer in three months. The same qualifications that any other officer in the state has. And could allow for a situation like we recently had in April where a police officer here, under part-time status, became a full-timer through this Bridge Academy and immediately went to another department. So the second, which goes along with it, is staffing. We've had many hiring processes for both someone for the office and police officers. We got pretty lucky for some part-time offices. This time around, we've got a few that we're going to be reaching out to from a recent interview. I've got one guy that I'd like to get appointed tonight. And we constantly are struggling with staffing because the, in particular, the officer that went to the bridge, he was responsible for about 15 to 17 shifts a month. So that hurt quite a bit. And my biggest issue right now, for some reason, and I've been working on this day and night, is our radio communications. We had a, we had a massive failure last week. And we've been working with the radio services, the Metacomit, to get to the bottom of it. We got some temporary loaner from the company. to put in our radio shack at the elementary school, and now we realize that it's, might have caused an issue for the other equipment, like it's giving some feedback or something, so we've been working on that for the better part of a week. And hopefully, we're gonna come out on top of this at some point.
Okay. So, with that last issue, is there anything that Peter, or I, or any member of the board can help you with, just because I don't want that to-
When I, when I need Peter to help me, I'll, I'll let him know, I've been working, trying to get it done, and it looks like Radio Services' module of communication, it looks like they're making headway to where we might be able to get the dispatch center to release some funds prematurely to the building of a radio tower, that will greatly increase Radio Services, but there's been some legal issues that I'm told that's kind of delaying that a little bit.
Yeah, Aubrey, do you have?
Just thinking, like, to the extent, you know, something like a reserve home transfer would be something that could help, like, if it's an emergency and we need it, then just let us know, we can go that route.
I, I think the problem with that might be, when I talked to Radio Services the other day, it could take as long as November to actually buy the equipment anyways that we need right now, when they're able to put it together, so I'll, I'll definitely stay on top of-
Yeah, and just to help, you know, it, it's a Metacomet nickel, okay, if you will, so the cost, we're really trying to put the burden of cost on Metacomet, because that's what the contract says. And so Chief's been working with folks at Metacomet, and the expert on this, and putting the lo- I mean, you got a loner for basically no charge, or if it's a charge, it's going to Metacomet right now, so that's a beautiful thing, it does impact also the fire department communication, so. And, and we do have, and there's been efforts al- already underway by, by and through Metacomet, to put in a new tower up at MES, which will presumably solve all the problems, but we're into the November timeframe, and who knows what, so, anyway. And, um, as you know, on July first, I'm on the board of Metacomet as a voting member, and I'm actually an officer there, they voted me in the kind people. As an officer.
More power for Peter.
Yeah, so, so, but we haven't played the Peter card yet, because Chief's handling it, right?
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's-
It's going well, pretty well, yeah, yeah, Chief's got these guys doing a good job on that.
And there's no safety issues with that at the moment, right?
Um, there were, it's, it's a little scratchy coming out of, the, the hiccup is, it's a little scratchy coming out of Metacomet to us right now, but our end apparently going back to them is fine from what I'm told, so we're trying to figure out why the loner equipment has made the system overall better, but creating some kind of slight interference there.
Okay.
But these guys, we, last week responded to a call up in the north, you know, up near the zoo, basically, and they discovered there was a hole of communicate, you know, an absence of communication, and that's where they got into the, you know, the building, and saw, geez, we got repeater problems and all, so it's a process of discovery as well, and they've done a nice job, although he's lost a lot of sleep, they've done a nice job about this.
I would agree.
So, I'll, I'll hop in here, given that you've identified kind of three of your top struggles, and now that you're the face of the police department, where are you gonna take this police department, are you gonna, are you gonna shape it? You know, play with the model, I mean, I don't know if the current model is working, it sounds like you have some struggles with the way it currently is.
I mean, within available resources to assist, I mean, everything comes down to financial resources. I mean, I live here too, I know the struggles of the taxpayer. But at some point, we may need to increase available resources to battle some of these things, I mean, these are my three top things right now, I mean, if I can't have staffing. I mean, and I'm working on that all the time, I mean, we just had another round of interviews, and we did get lucky with that. But once I get these things somewhat underway, and I can get a few more guys trained, I can think about possibly, you know, working on some issues with maybe the police station, you know, we have some issues with the cell block, we have some issues with locker rooms, you know? I, I think other than, like, there has to be available resources, that's what I see, I mean, I, I do agree that we try to live with less over here, but when we truly need something, we're gonna need it.
Well, you're in a tough situation, trying to manage this department, I, I recognize your, your hard work and the stress you put in here. You know, I, I'm just curious, the spin, I guess you're gonna put on things, I think, you know, every chief has, has something they're gonna add to the department, a fingerprint, and where they want to take it, and where they want to go with it, you identify some struggles, and I'm, I look forward to seeing what you have to add, and, and what you look, what you're looking to do with it. I'm just curious if you had kind of a plan, or a strategic plan.
I, to be honest with you, I, right now, we're very shorthanded, I'm just trying to maintain the systems, if I'm gonna be totally honest with you. I mean, I haven't been able to hire any full-timers, we're having struggles with that. I figure I can get some part-timers on board, maybe once I get a secretary in place, maybe I can, you know? I would love to tell you I have some grand scheme right now, but I'm sorry, I couldn't even identify that right now. Just trying to make sure we deal with all these challenges right now.
Yeah, no, that's fair, I mean, I, I can appreciate that, and I think we all recognize your hard work.
Thank you.
And I do understand that.
And just to speak plainly, so when you say, "resources," you're saying that the salaries we pay full-time police officers is not in line with market for surrounding towns?
I, I know what, what I was told, I know this officer that left here as a part-timer, he's making more money as a full-timer next door than a full-timer without any education stipend makes here, so that's right off the bat, so. Yeah, I would have to say yes.
Okay.
It is, it is different.
Okay.
I don't want to get too in the weeds, but I'm just kind of curious, I understand that the Bridge Academy posed a problem for a lot of departments, and, and folks are trying to get creative. Does an opportunity exist to possibly share FTEs between departments, does that help alleviate some of the pressure, or?
FTE?
A full-time employee, like, to, to share an officer between departments?
I mean, I would think you'd be talking about, like, merging a police department?
Not necessarily, just at least, you know, picking up patrolmen, that might be, y- you couldn't necessarily give enough work or enough shifts to one, y- you may have additional opportunities in another, is that, does that exist?
I think they're under different contracts, so I don't think that would apply. Because we have, Millville has our own agreement with the union for police officers, and then Blackstone, Mendon, and Nuxbridge, so it wouldn't be like, we have to have like an Uber kind of, it'd be like, it'd be regionalization, I think, is really what you're asking.
Well, I, I mean, the reality is, every police department around, they do pay more, and there's other, there's other issues too, I mean, you don't, for a lear- for a learning standpoint, I think a lot of the guys like to at least learn the job, we don't always have calls, you know what I mean? I've had, like, five accidents in the last two weeks, we hadn't had an accident for six months, you know? There's, there's different calls, y- you can go and have a bunch of calls in one night, or you might not have a few for a few days.
Right.
So, there's, there's a lot of different factors why people move on.
But also to supplement, you know, the, the town does rely on part-timers in a big way, and that-
Correct.
Part-timers are going the way of the dodo bird-
Correct.
Very quickly, right? But those part-timers may have full, typically have full-time jobs, they might even not be in police type of work, they might be engineers, and I don't know what else. Some are doing policing at colleges and universities, and that sort of thing, and those are some of our, you know, they're all strong and good and valuable, but some have different experiences they bring to the party.
There are different limitations with the part-times, I only have one unemployed part-timer right now, and he does put in a share of shifts, I have three that are in fire services, corrections, various, various positions throughout, most of them all do have full-time jobs.
That's fair.
Andrew, any questions?
Well, I'm just wondering, so would there be any or, uh, resources that you could reach out to help work on the, either the, and staffing, and also kind of the Bridge Academy, that you can reach out to, like, at the state or federal levels, are there any areas in that area where it could possibly help?
Like, they enacted the Bridge Academy for some reason, I don't really know why they enacted it. I was a little suspicious, because it does, it is gonna eventually cripple your small towns, especially out western Mass, some of those towns out there are all part-time departments, so I know that, um, when I watch some of the meetings, it's the bigger cities that are in charge of this bridge-
Correct.
That, you know, a few of them even have into the, close to the hundred offices, they're on the board, and they don't even have part-timers, so I, I don't know if anybody at the state level is gonna help the small towns when it's the, the bigger towns that are running it.
Yeah, except for, and you hate to think about it, is to call on the state police to supplement, you know, staffing needs or shift needs and whatnot, and you know, some of these towns, particularly out west, that's what they're doing, right, they're covering-
Correct.
Night shifts with the state police, right, so that's your, that's the Millville fallback position if we get to that point, but we, we don't want to get to that point, right?
I would say no, and I think if it was the state police, I mean, we have to remember the barracks that would assist us also has part of their patrol areas within Worcester, and we frequently have problems there, so I don't think we'd be-
High on the priority list and coverage.
Not be getting a very quick response, it could take twenty minutes, half hour to get them down here.
But I think you should talk about some of the, you had some creative ideas, like maybe a bonus if someone's completed and stayed, like, those are some of the things that we talked about, when we were talking about, like, mitigation tactics.
Sure, I mean, I had thought maybe we could set up something for this Bridge Academy, per se, these offices are gonna put out anywhere from three to five thousand dollars on their own, if we could reach some kind of agreement with them over a period of time, to see if we could get them to stay a little longer. Somewhere in the area of one to two years to get some money back to them, could even buy some additional time on the other end. And if, if we knew about that, I know there was some money offered through Mike Soder's office, but it has to be, you bring them the information on a completed Bridge Academy, and, and the other one left too soon to even try and figure it out.
Yeah. There, there's also ARPA money that-
Right.
You know, is des- is certainly designated as a good use of ARPA funds, even though we have broad use of it, that falls within the box of ARPA that was initially set out, so, to the extent, you know, we talked about that, we just gotta see if that's something we really want to do, and how we do it, so that you have time of retention versus dollars of availability from whatever funding source, ARPA, or Soder's office, or the state, or whatever.
Might be a question for legal, but I wonder if we can do a contract or an agreement between whatever candidate is looking to pursue the academy, and an arrangement where we would reimburse them X amount of dollars for time served.
Well, it's not a matter, it's not a matter of them wanting to do it, see, if they don't do it, then they're not a police officer anymore until they go through a standardized full-time academy, so it's, it's not like they can wait, the state is making them either go through this academy, or-
Give it up, yeah.
Or they have to, within a few years, go to a full-time academy, so. So, they have the opportunity now to go through this, and I think that's what a lot of them are doing, because they probably only have to put out about a hundred and fifty hours of their own time in person, and you would need close to eight hundred or something in a normal academy, so, so these guys are jumping on this, you know, pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think we could probably sit here and talk about this all night.
Yeah.
No, we, we could, I mean, I've had to make it my life, because this came up, and so did Post, and, you know, I'm constantly reading on this stuff.
I guess that, because you've been in the role for, since September, it's been going well, are there any, like, I guess, my, for my measure, I haven't heard anything, like, when something goes wrong, people will put that on Facebook in three seconds, like, or something's not happening, they'll email me, I'll get all this stuff, so I think, like, a measure for me is, I haven't heard a peep about anyone saying anything about the police department. So, that's like, good, that people, you know, no one's saying, you know, did you know this happened, you know, this happened, it's all smooth sailing, nice and quiet. So, I don't know, I don't know if I'm missing something, if you want to tell on yourself right now, well, actually, I did this, and it was terrible.
Yeah, no, I don't think we've, I don't think we, we haven't had, certainly had any disciplinary type issues.
Yeah.
We, we have had some serious calls, obviously, in the recent past, and, you know, I try to be there, or Roy Sullivan, the sergeant, helps me with those things. And we've gotten through everything.
Yeah, and you called the state police in recently for that.
It was, it was actually the Semlek team, that was why I thought, I thought you drove by while we're out here today and taking measurements, so I, I thought you must have got a call.
Nope, taking my daughter tennis lessons, so I just waved.
Yeah, so, that's what we were doing, he was just making some other, other adjustments and finalizing the case from his end.
Okay.
But, just to say, you know, just to reinforce, like, I, I interact with this guy quite a lot, and, you know, he, he's not gonna toot his horn, but he's on site on some of these ugly situations, in addition to the, the people in th- this room, so tonight I feel very safe because of all the people that are here, but they, they do encounter some very challenging things that you can't even imagine, and this guy is one of the people that's generally there on site at the time of that event, and there's stuff you can't unsee, but somehow they-
They pull it off.
They pull it off, you know, I don't, I don't know how they do it, not for me.
Thank you. We may have to cross-train employees, Peter, and send you out there. We'll give you a badge and a car.
So, one quick, not so much a question, but I was wondering, have you given thought to giving more, not press releases or anything like that, but like, more clarity to, towards the public in outreach?
Community policing?
Yeah, basically, like, in getting kind of-
I mean, I certainly agree that, I certainly agree that we could do a program like that, but I would like to, in all honesty, I would like to build up the staff in a little bit. I, I think it's a priority for me to get the shifts filled and continue the operation moving along.
Okay.
I, I definitely think that's, that's a great idea, and I, I love being involved in those community events, when we first got in here, we were out there, and, you know-
How we party?
It was certainly easy, it was certainly easy, because those events were being assisted by other people, so that's certainly great.
More staff, yeah, yeah. I, I always look for you, I always look for you out there, so.
I'm, I'm out there.
Well, I find you.
All right.
I used to find a lot more, though, because I, I know you're having some staffing issues, there used to be a few more people out there. I'm missing your little sign at the, the bike pass, you know?
That's been run over.
Run over and gone, huh?
So, Chief's been in the hot seat for over twenty minutes.
Think we made him sweat enough?
I do.
All right.
So, I'll make a motion that we-
Last chance to bail.
Appoint
All right.
William Coop to Police Chief in Millville, pending outcome of contract negotiations.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Last chance for questions.
You sure? Sure? Okay.
All's in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Richard, thank you. I'm welcome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right, wise choice.
Okay, so we were trying to keep those like twenty minutes, we did go over. So, Chief Liar, step into the hot seat, so we'll try to set, wrap up at nine fifteen. And then, Richard, you're next, we'll, we'll, I'll move to annual appointments, we'll have you come next. You're welcome, because we're getting kind of late. Okay. So, I'll start with questions, Chief Liar, since everybody else up here is shy but me, apparently. So, same first two questions, why do you want to be chief, and can you give us an overview of- Same first two questions. Why do you wanna be chief? And can you give us an overview of your certifications and your background?
Okay, um I think why I wanna be chief, one, as Chief Coop alluded to, he lives in town. I live in town. This is, I look at it, you know, this is my town. Um, I was born, born here, spent the first ten years of my life here. Um, my father was a teacher, so we moved to Vermont in eighty-six and then. I went through my uh middle school, high school, and my college years up there and then ninety-nine, moved back to town. Um, got on the department in December ninety-nine. Uh, I got my firefighter one-two certifications, my EMT basic certifications uh in two thousand one. Uh, two thousand six, I was promoted to lieutenant. Uh, two thousand twenty, uh promoted to deputy. I'm a fourth generation, uh public safety servant to this town, uh dating back to my great-grandfather. Uh Joe Popek in the forties, who served a short time as police chief and fire chief. Uh various uncles, grandfather, my father was in the fire department, uh both as firefighter and an EMT back then. I raised my family in this town, so I feel like I have stake or skin in the game here with as far as the public safety and. That aspect goes, so then I feel I can perform the position. Uh, and I was raised where if you can help out and pitch in and do your part, you do it. So um as far as my qualifications, like I said, I'm firefighter one-two qualified and pro board, uh EMT basic. Um, fire officer one and two, pro board certified. I'm currently working to submit my uh fire chief credentialing to the state. Um, I've met all the requirements. It's just a matter of getting a letter of recommendation from an area chief, which I don't foresee having an issue with. And submitting that and waiting for the response back from the state. My, my full-time job, I'm a district fire warden for DCR Bureau of Forestry and Fire Control. My district is uh Fire District Seven, so. Millville's in my district. I encompass thirty-two cities and towns, southern Worcester County. Uh, through that, along with being a member of the fire department, I've had a lot of access to training over the years. Uh, multiple uh fire academy classes, fire attack, uh aerial ladders, pumps, hydraulics, um, I can get you a list.
I'm gonna need it.
A lot of incident command, training, ICS one hundred to four hundred. I'm a qualified NWCG, uh crew boss, engine boss. I take the wildfire hand crew. On out-of-state fire assignments. Um, right now, I'm one of the only two crew bosses we have within the state. Uh, safety officer qualified, uh division soup, strike team leader. I function on our uh type-three incident management team that the Bureau of Fire, Forestry and Fire Control has. In various roles there from for planned events, unplanned uh natural disasters, fire events. Where I filled uh I incident command position uh for overall for IC, uh division soup again, safety officer. And I'm sure I'm probably forgetting a few things.
Yeah, that's very impressive. And I will say, and I didn't say this when Chief Coop was up here, but I also really liked that both chiefs live in town. And I think, I love that connection. Um, so, okay. Um, I did have a question. I've seen more exercising and stuff like that in town.
Yeah.
Um, so that seems to be a change, and I was just curious about that.
Uh, the one, one thing we've changed as far as training goes is. I also was, when I made lieutenant, I became department training officer. So one, we had always trained on a monthly basis. Uh, under the previous chief, uh we made that. To nine months out of the year and taking uh July and August, we didn't do. Department trainings in December for, you know, the summer vacation, uh Christmas holiday, stuff like that. We did uh re- reconfig- configure that to train once a month, so we train twelve months out of the year. We try to take every opportunity we can to train. Uh, anytime we can get the fire academy to come down and do a class, we'll, we bring them in. And we've also been posting more on uh the department's uh Facebook page, just to try to get the word out and. Cause I'm sure people see the trucks from other towns and or the state trucks in town or lifeline landing at the school. Um, just to let them know, like, hey, we're, we're doing, we're doing training, you're, you know, your, your tax dollars. The people that are protecting you and your property are trying to stay current. And like, as Chief, Chief Coop had mentioned, you know, my staff, I'd put them up against any staff in the state, any department in the state. They're well dedicated. They're well trained and highly dedicated.
And so I guess last comment before I turn to Richard, Andrew, is kind of the same thing, is that things have been quiet. I haven't gotten like. What's going on with the fire department or things like that? It's been all very positive. Or I hear nothing, which is also positive when you're in this seat. So, cause again, people will put something went wrong on Facebook in three seconds. Before they say anything nice. So I've, the quietness is what I've been appreciating. So, so Andrew, Richard, anything?
Um, so I hope everybody's not being on overtime right now, adding to that line anymore. So my first question would be for the budget. I know it's, obviously, everybody in town has budget restraints. Um, would you be working towards maintaining um inside your budget for the next coming years?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Do you have any, like, for instance, like this year, we went over that, do you have any ways of mitigating that or rectifying it?
I think the big thing is trying to, no, knowing how I see now the budget was managed in the past and. With, and I, I know I mentioned this at other meetings, with having one, one department head covering both. You know, and taking from one to pay for the other. I know for a fact that happened. Um, so it's, I had said all along, when if, if the two departments were ever split with separate heads. It whoever was in your position was gonna have an issue trying to just wade through that. And I understand why that was happening then, and you could do it and cause you're in charge of it, but. Um, now it's just trying to get my feet under me to say, okay, where's? How were certain things, bills that are coming in, that have been coming in for year after year, where were they really being paid out of and? Is the line item where it should be to cover that? So, yeah, the overall goal is to work within the budget, yes.
Great. Um, and then, yeah, as Chairman Gill mentioned, we have, I've been seeing a little bit more posting and whatnot, um as well as training, and that's all. Uh, very good. Um, will you be? So when the state comes out to do like those classes, how exactly does that work? In regards to like them providing the opportunity for that costing of that hike house?
So any of the training that the, that's through the academy, we don't pay for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, they put the trainings on for nothing. It's just, we're paying the hourly um wage for the fire staff to be there.
Um, and then you mentioned fire one and fire two. Could you explain what the, what those entail?
So the, the fire one-two, firefighter one-two certification, firefighter two certification. Right now, any, all entry-level firefighters that come on to a department, and we, we do this as well, we send. We send our firefighters to what's uh known as the call, call vol- volunteer fire academy. It's run by the, run by DFS of the fire academy. They go through that training. It's usually uh Wednesday night, Monday night, or Tuesday night, Thursday night. Uh, and then usually it's every Saturday or every Sunday, where they're doing their um. Depending on now that we're kind of post-COVID, in COVID. It was kind of ver- it was mostly virtual, then they'd go to the academy to do all their hands-on stuff, live fire, things like that. Uh, whereas before, they were going to the academy for the classroom stuff and the non-fire and live fire. Um, so once, once the applicant or once the firefighter finishes that, that class. They receive their pro board and state firefighter one and firefighter two certification. And that's a, a uh nationwide recognizable level of proficiency in firefighting.
So those are in tandem, though? Like, you get fire one and fire two?
Yeah, the way they do it, um, I'm old enough where, when I went through the class, it was, it was firefighter one. And then did, did the additional training, get the firefighter four, so now it's combined. So you get both certifications.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to say that um I, I appreciate all the postings on Facebook and all the additional training, so. Um, it is refreshing to see that you guys are uh doing more and you're, you're definitely uh more in the limelight, more in the public doing that, so I do appreciate that. Um, I'm going to assume that you don't have the same staffing needs as the police department. Because um you folks are training more and, and you are out there and, and the Bridge Academy's not affecting you like it is the police department, so. Um, do, do you foresee any other needs uh with the fire department, any immediate shortcomings?
I think like. Like all departments in, in District Seven, it just recruitment retention's always, always a struggle. Um, so we do have full to, two full-time staff on um Sunday through Friday. Uh, through, you know, eight, eight to five. The rest of the time is covered by our call staff coming in. So the call staff, they can only be there should, if they're out of work, happen to be home, they don't have the kids. That kind of thing, you know, that, where they're free to show up. So right now, we have a roster, including myself, seventeen. Uh, which is, which is pretty good, but not everybody show, can show up at the same time. Which is why it goes, goes back to our mutual aid where we rely heavily on mutual aid. Um, it, you know, just like our surrounding towns rely on mutual aid coming in. It's, it's kind of the norm in the fire service. Uh, the only way you get away from that is complete full-time staffing of all your trucks.
Right.
And, you know, under financial restraints, it's small town, that, you know, we realize that's not happening. So that's, it's a struggle. Like I said, our roster's pretty good, but we're always looking to bolster that. So we, we have added, um, I believe we've added four firefighters in the past. Nine months or so, which is, which is good. Some of them have already have their fire one-two certification, so that's one less thing we don't have to send them for. We actually, we do have two firefighters uh starting, they, they started their orientation for the firefighter one-two uh call ball class last night. And just so everyone's aware, in the board, the way we, we compensate them for their hours of training is, once they. Once they complete their graduation, um they have to stay with the department for a year before they receive. Uh, their payment for going through the class.
That's good.
Then our, our former chief did, did implement that, which was an excellent idea, cause we did have a time where. Um, personnel would go get this class and then.
That's fair.
Uh, and one quick question about the ambulance mainly. What the services, from what I understand, are more limited than, right? Uh, for like, because it's an EMT.
So.
Uh, or.
You're talking basic to ALS, yeah. So we're, we're a BLS service. So we cannot perform advanced life support measures. That is something I would love to see changed during my tenure. But again, that's, you get into, you know, funding for staffing to be able to supply. Um, the personnel trained at that level for the amount of time we, yeah, the seven-day week coverage to be able to provide that service.
And, and you have staff on hand to, to backcharge the service from the ambulance to the patient, right? So we're, we're reimbursed through medical insurance?
Yes.
That's how that works?
Yeah.
But that is a goal that you hope to do.
Yes.
In some way, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I guess along those lines, so you mentioned we're not able to provide advanced life support about. How many calls do you think we're turning down not being able to do that? And it could be percentage or however you wanna measure it.
Well, we're not, we're not turning anything down, but we're, we do have agreements in place with. Our, some of our local departments, they'll come in as a ALS intercept, so they'll come in, jump in our truck and transport with us.
Okay.
Uh, and. Off the top of my head. Yeah, I was thinking maybe fifteen to twenty percent.
Okay.
The, for, yeah, for something off the top of my head, that's be the closest I could give you.
Okay, no, that's fine.
And they generally jump in. They don't, it's not like you transfer them into the other rig, but they're just jumping in our rig. Going with your guys to the hospital.
Okay, great, because it requires two to, to run the ambulance, three for a fire truck, right? So is that how that works? Is that how your staffing works?
Uh, in a perfect world, yes.
In a perfect world, right? I, I guess Peter's volunteering. He wants to do.
No, I just.
You're already getting him a badge and a car, so.
Steve's taking the big rig out on his own.
You know what? Bring it in, bring it in. He wants to try it on.
Bruno's promised me a sweatshirt for the last year and I'm like, come on.
You gotta sign a contract for that, Peter, though. You gotta work at least one shift.
I've got money in my wallet, I'll pay for it. Gee whiz.
So you have five minutes left going by our twenty minute.
I've made him sweat enough, I think.
Okay, how are you, Andrew?
I'm used to it.
I'm good.
Last chance before you wanna, do you wanna bail?
Um, so I'll make the motion to appoint uh Roy Liar Junior um as fire chief pending uh contract negotiations.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So moving right along, so I'm gonna reverse C and D just because uh Richard Herto is here. So, Richard, if you wanna come on up, I had a chance to review a few things. Um, I know Andrew and. Richard also had a chance to kind of review emails and things like that.
I did glance over them earlier. I wanted to dig them out.
Okay. Um, so I did look at this, the email communications and kind of the summary that you sent. Richard, and like, we can go through these kind of.
I'm, I'm not gonna go through all this material. I'm gonna summarize it.
That'd be great.
Uh, just so that uh, what you have, the material, to double check.
Yeah.
My uh, my bullets. Look at that one. Um, prior to December of twenty-one. Uh, Millville residents were able to call the center, uh drop off their ten or twelve dollar payments to the. Uh, senior club for the upcoming meeting, upcoming meal. Uh, and that all changed after um, after February twenty-third. February seventeenth, uh I attended a COA meeting and asked about the Bouya account. Uh, to see if the senior club, because of the guidelines of the Bouya account. Seventy-five percent of the interest is used for the seniors. Uh, subject to the approval of the uh director and the COA member. And I was hoping to get some field trips with bus or something. As of today, they still haven't straightened out that. Application form because of some confusion, I'm told is uh. Part of the Secretary of Treasury or somebody who hasn't been able to resolve that. Uh, February twenty-third, um, I received a letter from Mrs. Lamro. Two weeks before our meeting saying that the members will no longer be able to call the center or drop off their. Ten or twelve dollar payments for the meal. My uh argument per se. Is that if you look at all the minutes for December, January, February, uh there's no discussion by the COA. No vote taken to where that action was done by Mrs. Lamro. Stopping the seniors from doing that. Uh, and I think that was inappropriate by doing that on her own without. Uh, discussing it or voting on it, because for forty-nine years, the seniors and the COA. The senior club and the COA were basically family and we worked together on that. So that created some sort of a, a, a change that affected the seniors uh and an inconvenience. I then asked for permission to put up a bulletin board. I thought you had a question. I then asked permission at one of the meetings, COA meetings, to put up a bulletin board three feet by three feet. At the club for past and future functions or activities from the board. Um, it was discussed by the COA. That's the only article that was ever, or item that was discussed and voted on. I had three yeses. Mrs. Finn voted no and Mrs. Lamro abstained from that. But I was able to get permission to put up a bulletin board at the club. I also, at around that time, asked permission to put a locked mailbox. At the club for the convenience of the seniors so that they could either drop off a letter. Or their ten or twelve dollar payment. or their ten or twelve-dollar payment. Uh, and I was told by Mrs. Finn that town council said no. And then today, I was told that I needed permission from the selectmen to put a mailbox, a locked mailbox in the hall. Uh, and that, I think is, had, if Mrs. Lamro had not sent on her own the letter to terminate that service, the mailbox wouldn't have even been an issue. But because she did that and the seniors were not allowed to drop off their checks or mail or anything at the club, at the center for the club, I felt that that was kind of like a hardship for the seniors. So, I am here to ask if the selectmen feel that it was an appropriate move on Mrs. Lamro to stop those functions after forty-nine years of dropping off their check or calling the center. If the board feels that was an appropriate move, then I am here to ask permission to put up a locked mailbox. It's a regular mailbox. I've discussed it at two or three meetings. The first meeting, I needed to show a drawing. The second meeting, I asked if I needed a building permit. It was, so, the most recent discussion today was I needed permission from the selectmen to put a mailbox to address the, for letters for the club or their, their stipend for the, uh, for the dinner, which is ten, twelve dollars, maybe a hundred bucks tops in the box at any one time, because we could stop by and pick it up. So, those are the issues that I have, that I sent documents to support that. Um, I also sent the email that was sent February, February twenty-fourth or twenty-seventh, uh, regarding the no more calling the senior club. Because it was no more calling the senior center because they felt that it was an independent club, which I found it kind of hard to digest since they've been doing it for forty-nine years. This year will be our fiftieth year anniversary, and it seems like every month there's another obstacle that the club has to, um, contend with or try to put out a fire. So, those are my, uh, and no vote, okay. So, those are my issues, and I sent the emails to support the lack of discussion and action by the board and just the independent action of Mrs. Lamro. Then there was another thing about on March fifteenth, where Mrs. Finn sent a letter to, uh, town administrator about club activities or something to that effect. And again, if you check all the minutes, she did that on her own. There was no discussion by the board or vote taken by the COA. It's just things that are done without the consensus of the board. And the only thing that was done with the consensus of the board was the bulletin board. A three-foot by three-foot that I built and put up, and that was a three-to-two vote. Everything else, there was no discussion, no vote. It just happens. Uh, so I think that's unfair to the seniors of this town. Have any questions?
I'd have a couple of statements. Um, so the first one would be the board that was put up that they voted for, that was your, the senior club's board, right?
Correct. That was February seventeenth. Oh, no, the first thing was the, uh, request for the Bouyard account on February seventeenth, and I was told there was some confusion, although I did get a, an email from, uh, the director saying that at the time, it was a balance of twelve thousand dollars. And after finally receiving, uh, a letter giving a description of the guidelines of the Bouyard account, where seventy-five percent of the interest earned that year would, could be spent for the seniors of this town uh, under the direction of the director and the COA. So, that was the first event. The second thing was the, um, the, uh, the vote on the bulletin board. And that was approved because it was discussed and voted on. And then the, everything else, there's no discussion. Uh, it was just on, um, on the whim of an individual.
Okay. And then the other thing which confuses me is the fact that the COA is recommend, or one member of the COA or the COA is itself recommending that we make the decision to put the mailbox in the building when the COA is the one who's in charge of the building.
Well, Mrs. Finn said that because it's a town-owned building, they didn't have the authority. So, that was brought up three times. I brought drawings of the mailbox. I brought, uh, dimensions. I brought everything to the, the COA. And the final, after I did everything they've asked, it was then, well, it's a town-owned building. You're gonna need written permission from the selectmen to put up a mailbox for the convenience of the center, of the seniors. Which, again, I, I didn't dispute it because it ends up being a one-way discussion. Uh, so, if the board, again, feels that it was fair to change the policy after forty-nine years and need a mailbox and a bulletin board and all of that, uh, if need be, I'll submit a letter requesting permission to put up a regular mailbox with a key that would be, the senior club would have that key.
So, the only thing is, is that the COA does own the building, so they're the ones who control who uses it, how it's used, what's on it and what's in it.
Well, we passed a motion last time to, to ensure that they could hold their events there. So, that's probably what she's falling back to, because they were, she was trying to bar the events when they wouldn't have an insurance policy.
Yes.
But, so she's just falling back to that and not making the decision. And that's what it feels like.
If, if I could step into the sandbox.
Yes.
Shall I say? Just, um, just to point out, you also have in your packets, as you know, uh, some responses to Richard's points from Mrs. Finn to just, that's in your packets, and maybe you had a chance to review those. Um, just on the Boulio account, as, as Richard's referring to, technically, what it was was seventy-five percent of the estate of the Boulios went to the benefit of the Council on Aging, or the Millville Council on Aging, or to be controlled by the Council on Aging. It, it, the interests or the earnings of that account are available for the Council on Aging to spend in whatever manner it chooses for its activities, okay? It's, uh, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the estate that went into basically a, an interest-bearing CD. And it rolls over periodically. So, depending on when it rolls over and for what duration, that's a treasurer-managed thing, right? Um, so the last rollover, or between rollovers, apparently it accumulated some interest. And there was no instruction to take out, just roll over the principal part. So, there was some interest that went back into the principal, if you will, that was rolled over. So, there was some, it wasn't lost income, but it was income of the Boulio account, no longer available at that time for the Council on Aging activities. Um, there has been a difficulty on the part of the treasurer and the accountant at this stage to reconcile the balances available of the Boulio account, or the, I'll call it the COA account is really what it is. It's a disbursement and receipt account that Tina basically manages, okay? And she does a good job. She has an Excel file on this of the ins and the outs. The challenge is the outs are paid by check. So, if they pay, uh, the cultural council reimburses them for an activity, or they pay for something, come in and do dancing or something, the check goes out and it comes out of that account, which is, they call it the Boulio account, but it, it's a bit more than that because into it not only goes Boulio interest, but also cash charges that they might get, say, for transportation or something. So, there's a variety of things. All the cash does get deposited. It comes over here. They fill us up, it gets deposited. How they've accounted for that needs improvement, okay? And they're working on improving that. So, Tina has what I would define as the best record of the running balance in that account. Not the books of Millville today, okay? What we're talking about is the thirteen thousand or whatever that balance is, okay? My visit with Tina just to, last week, sat down with her for quite a while. Um, she went through that. She was gonna give me some information, you know, I'll look forward to seeing that. Um, and we talked about the lockbox. As you recall, back when the issue of the use of the senior club using the facility came up, and council's advice was probably shouldn't, you know, my advice at the time, probably shouldn't. But we learned more and more, and we, you all decided, right, I think rightly so, that the senior, the seniors get the benefit of a lot of volunteer efforts by the senior club folks and putting on activities. So, you had a luncheon there the other day, right? You, that you guys did, not, you know, not paid staff of the town of Millville in the budget. It's their efforts doing it. Yes, they use Tina to a degree. So, while I'm sitting there with Tina uh, last week, you know, some sweet lady came in and gave her ten dollars to pay for the luncheon. So, she put that in an envelope, and then, I don't know who she gave it to, but, you know, there's Tina kind of managing their money, which is a little bit of a challenge. So, I asked her about the lockbox, if, the mailbox, locked mailbox. And in council's advice at the same time was, no, it's the town's building. Probably don't want to have a sen, you know, a separate private club doing that. But talking to Tina, she'd welcome that.
Yeah.
And she has the spot for it. And, you know, so my recommendation is go for it, you know? And if, if you settle it tonight, I think that's a good thing. And, uh, that will simplify her life, it will simplify their life. Their access to it would only be during the hours that the senior center is open, right? No big deal. Here's a picture of the mailbox, three by ten by twelve. It's not a huge.
Richard, you came prepared.
Oh, I, I, this whole book is nothing but different things. And I've got the letter here for the, the letter from Tina, the twelve thousand, eight hundred and whatever dollars, and the Bouyard account and, um.
So, I had a couple of things. I just wanted, oh, please.
Just to address some of the questions. So, first off, one thing about like them being blocked was, which what we had done was we had blocked them from going and using the senior center, which was erroneous for multiple reasons. We then repealed that act. The senior center, the COA is still in charge of the COA building, because for instance, when we lost the original, the town hall in Central Street, the board of selectmen at that time had to go to the COA to ask for permission to use that building in order to do meetings. So, they're in charge of who gets to use it, also what goes up. So, the mailbox question is basically out of our jurisdiction. It's up to the COA to, to, and not to punt it to us.
It is a town-owned asset.
But it's owned, it's operated and directly, because of the COA's constitution, directly run by the COA. They have control over the building in all its entirety, despite being a town department.
I think we maybe wanna make, recommend that they allow the mailbox.
Yeah, we can recommend it, but.
We can recommend, and if it doesn't come to fruition, then let us know, so.
The, well, actually, you can go, because that was my, I've finished my.
I have five things.
No, no, I've got tons.
So, I guess, so from an overall perspective, I think it's disappointing to see that the collaboration has ended. But I don't think we can force the collaboration. So, um, and I, I don't think you would want us to do that anyway, because it's not gonna be productive, positive collaboration when it's forced. Um, for the Boulio account, so Peter and I spoke about this a little bit too, so it was will to the town in a very specific way that it is to be used by, managed by the Council on Aging. I think it would be really nice to see the Council on Aging and the senior club partner on an event, and you'd get a little bit more mileage out of those dollars. Um, but again, we can't force that either. Um, I, I think the other thing, and Peter brought up a key point, like that Tina would welcome the mailbox and kind of ease the communication on her. I also want to encourage direct communication. Maybe I'll send a note to, uh, Mrs. Finn, and LCC, you, Richard, and you, Peter, because I feel like Tina's being put in the middle. And I think it would go smoother if there was direct communication between the COA and the senior club. And certainly, you can see, see me and Peter on every single one of these emails, if you want, we're happy to kind of manage the tone if needed, if that ever comes up. And the reason why I say that, that I think Tina's kind of in the middle, is, um, because one of the things you mentioned, Richard, was the serving of food and that there was maybe an issue with the senior club serving food. So, I reached out to Chair Bobby Marks on the Board of Health and said, hey, I was wondering, did you hear anything about this? Like, what's going on? And he said, um, it was mentioned to me, but not through formal channels. I am unaware of any complaint. Tina Cook, and this is why I think she's being put in the middle, asked me if members of the senior club require safe certifications to portion out food for other members of the club. They do not. As of yet, the senior club doesn't prepare any food. And I see Mr. Marks bring in the food. I know he does all that other good stuff. In the case that the senior club did decide to prepare food in the future, I've attached a screenshot of the food code exemption for certified food protection managers when a nonprofit operates a temporary food establishment. It seems the state legislature may have foreseen all the small nonprofits like Boy Scout troops, churches, and senior citizen organizations that might be treated unfairly by overzealous bureaucrats. This exemption prevents that. If anyone has further questions, I'm always available. Regards, Bobby Marks. So, Bobby Marks, thank you for your email. But I think, like, you know, when you have a pancake breakfast on Saturday at the church to raise money for the Boy Scouts, you don't want someone to go in there. You need to be shut down, like.
I have a copy of those laws and the correspondence, uh, on that if you'd like.
I have them too.
Okay.
So, I think, I don't think we can force collaboration. What I think we can do is kind of remove barriers to the senior club operating. Like I said, I think it's disappointing that the collaboration is going so smoothly for such a long time, and now it's not. Um, but I think, so what we can do is try to make, you know, let you put the box, you know, we can make a recommendation that the box is allowed. Um, we made a recommendation that you can have your events. Um, if you wanna, I think another recommendation, I'll reach out to Tina and be like, hey, why don't you have these groups communicate more directly? And I think that would be better for her as well. Just because I don't, you know, it feels, I don't know if she feels like she's being put in the middle. I feel like she, I would feel that way. And I don't think it's a comfortable position to be in, so. So, that's, that was all I had to say. And I don't know if that was five or more or less, but.
The other point I would have is the fact that the COA with this, these allegations, that there's only one member making decisions on that. Just because we had had a previous, uh, member of the COA come up to us saying that they felt pressured about leaving and not being included in the meeting.
Yeah.
So, just, we might need to look into that a little bit more, because it seems like this might be a issue that something's not. Communication might be broken down, or something might not be correct there. So. That's all I had.
Richard?
Thanks, here.
Okay.
So, do I have the consensus of the selectmen that a mailbox can be put up there?
I was just about to make a motion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen make a recommendation to the COA that they allow the senior club to place a locked mailbox by the dimensions that Mr. Herto has mentioned this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. Okay. So, help anyway, you're welcome. Help any way that you can. I think that the direct communication is probably the best avenue, just moving forward.
It's a start.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I just want to say if Mrs., if the COA, or for the COA wants to come and talk and say, you know, we had something, we had a different point of view, we would certainly give them the equal airtime.
I have other things, but that's another, another adventure. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. So, I'm gonna move over to appointments. Um, so how this will work is I will usually, I will read the appointments on these couple pieces of paper slowly. If you want to hold, just say hold, and then we can discuss it if needed. Okay. So, one-year appointments, July first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Building Department, Jofas Patrick, Building Inspector slash Zoning Enforcement Officer. Mark Aruda, Assistant Building Inspector.
Hold.
Electrical Inspector, Jack Granger, Electrical Inspector. John DiAgostino, Plumbing Inspector. The Cable Access Committee. Timothy Labonte, Cable Coordinator. Timothy Labonte, Member. Jesse Dufoe, Member. Madison Durand, Member. Colleen Curris, Member. Carl Hamilton, Member. Emergency Management, Mima. Paulette, Member. Benton Phelps, Mender, Member. Mender. Roy Lee R. Junior, Acting Director. Did you make that just director?
Yes.
Okay, so Roy Lee R. Junior, Director. Been promoted. Treasurer Collector's Office, Maria, Marcia Pharo, Assistant Treasurer Collector. Police Department, Thomas Reynolds, Police Officer. James Cusack, Police Officer. Steve Lucava, Police Officer. Nicholas Green, Police Officer. Peter Gallerani, Police Officer. Jeffrey Beckwith, Police Officer. Keith Lanigan, Police Officer.
Hold.
Parks and Recreation Department, Kevin Delgizzi, Member. Chief William Coop, Member. Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee, Kevin Delgizzi, Member. Gene Turcot, Veterans Agent. Neil Foley, Flag Warden. Three-year appointments, July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Council on Aging, Sandra Caswell, Member. Pamela Dean Kobotish, did I say her name right?
Bittish.
Kobotish, thank you, Member. Susan Robbins, Member.
Uh, hold all.
You wanna hold the whole Council on Aging?
Yep.
Okay. Historical Commission, Lionel Clement, Member. Diane Hadley, Member. And I think that's all we got.
That's right.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the appointments as read, but not those that were being held. We'll discuss those in a moment. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Andrew, oh, sorry, I didn't do my roll call vote. That was my fault. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer will be aye. Okay, so we have one, five holds. So Andrew, since you held them, you're the star of the show.
So, the.
Assistant Building Inspector.
Assistant, yeah, Assistant Building Inspector, uh, Inspector. Uh, that's a new position, correct? I mean, that's a new.
New person, new person.
Position, yeah. Okay, um, so just out of, um.
So I have a little letter, you see, I think you're looking at that, Andrew, from Joe. He works with Joe, Joe works with him in, um, you know, in Attleboro, so. And he's actually a building commissioner in Attleboro, so he's highly certified. And, uh, he's from Norton. Joe doesn't think he's gonna be needed too often, but frankly, he's, uh, you know, willing to step in and backstop Joe when he's not available.
He's on vacation and things like that.
I think Joe might even still be here. I could double check, uh, if you wanted more questions. But I, you know, I think he's very well qualified, even though we haven't met him, he's willing to do it and knows how to work with Joe and vice versa, so.
I did speak with him, actually, if he's the building commissioner in Attleboro. So, yeah, he's been doing this thirty-five years or something and he was able to answer a lot of, a lot of questions for me, so. I was quite impressed, actually.
Yeah, the main reason I held is just out of continuity for the fact that we, in a previous meeting, wanted to have people present when we were appointing them. Um, so that's just mainly the reason I'm holding that. I don't have any, I don't think there should be any reasons not to appoint him, but I think that we should make sure that, yes.
We try to hold to that as much as we can, absolutely. Totally agree, Andrew. Okay. And then Keith, the, next would be the police officer?
Yes.
Keith Lanigan?
Yep, so that's the same thing, basically, with the new, new position or new.
So I can tell you, this was a surprise to Chief Coop. I can tell you, come on up, I can tell you what happened. And Chief Coop can tell you what happened.
I can tell you what happened. I, I, I was waiting for the meeting to begin and I realized at that point that we were trying to get a lot of stuff done tonight. And under the forty-eight hour rule, it was agreed that I could get that on the.
Yeah.
Agenda for tonight. Um, I certainly would have had him here and I would have had a presentation I can tell you about him. He was a former employee. Uh, he's a full-time police officer at a local college. And he brings some experience and maturity here. So we wanted to bring him back on.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so.
I don't have him on that list, actually.
Yeah, no, he was just added like right before the meeting.
It was literally written in.
Handwritten in, okay.
Yeah.
And I did see it and I did hear, so I, but just out of continuity and I do appreciate that you're here for that too, so, thank you.
That, and that was actually Plan B. If the person couldn't be there, their boss needed to be here, so.
Exactly.
Making him sweat again.
Okay.
Take more than that, Will.
Ah, challenge accepted.
Chief Coop, you can stay at the big table if you want to, but you can.
Is there something else on?
No.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, and so Council on Aging?
Yep, uh, before that, but Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee, is there only one person on that at the moment?
Uh, I don't know how many. I think that.
It's just Kevin.
Yeah.
Cause yeah, cause it's one year, so I'm assuming, okay. So they, well, I mean, they can, well, he can meet, but he can't do anything at this point.
No, but he's willing to step into the fray, you know?
Talk about things.
I think thankfully, Chief Coop volunteered to work with him on the parks and recs, right?
Oh, Kevin Delgizzi's on that committee too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Yes. Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, so that was my, mainly just a thought, just, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then on the COA, I just feel like we may, might want to hold on them just until we look into the thing, the issues, cause I, I feel like there are some problems with the way that meetings are being done and with the current actions being taken by some, so.
So would you like to have the COA come in at your next meeting, perhaps, and have a discussion and, and even knock this off at the same time, perhaps?
Yeah.
What do you think of that?
Yeah, it seems fair.
Actually, I, do you want me to say if Joe's here? Cause if he's here, he would be the boss and I would also be compliant with the rules, Andrew.
No, it's not.
All right, just saying.
I was merely pointing it out, just to.
It can be.
For the record. You don't mention.
Oh, you missed him. He was here earlier, yeah.
No, I, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Naily just pointing it out, so that way we have it.
Yeah.
If we don't point it out, we're probably gonna get yelled at.
No, no, I think that, I, it's very reasonable.
Very good.
So I will, I will make a motion to approve Mark Aruda as the Assistant Building Inspector for one-year appointments, July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Do you wanna include the conference?
Do you want me to do, I was gonna do them together, okay. And we'll also include, um, Keith Lanigan as a police officer for the same one-year appointment.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? I don't know why I'm writing this, we're gonna have meetings anyway. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. I wanna say what I'm particularly proud of is we're doing these appointments before June thirtieth, because this is the first time that I've been on the Board of Selectmen and we've done these in June. We're doing the appointments usually in July and August, so. Yay us.
And also yay for the people that are stepping up.
That's right, I know.
Re-upping here.
I will say, actually, that's actually the more important point.
Yep.
That we do have many, many opportunities for involvement, so thank you for stepping up and if there are any other, if there's anyone else.
Yeah, just the other thing, in your package, you also have the list of appointments by our strong chief. So you don't appoint him, he does. There's the list that has been included, so they're aware of all the folks. Uh, just wanted to point that out.
Okay, perfect. Okay, um, update on Town Accountant and Treasurer Collector status.
Yeah, so just a brief update for folks, you know, we have, uh, our Town Accountant and our Treasurer work for us part-time. They're not employees, they're paid as, uh, ten ninety-nine, you know, consulting service providers. They generally work outside of business hours. And they're looking to roll off of their positions here, helping Millville in the not-too-distant future, but they're not leaving us high and dry. So we have posted for the positions, I've had some applicants, mostly for the Treasurer Collector position. We have, um, you know, I think we have a, you know, an end game in sight on, on that at some point. The challenges on the Town Accountant, and we're trying to be creative. We were even involved with Bob Brown here and trying to see if we can get some assistance on that. So we're working towards that. And Tara's committed, you know, our Town Accountant not to leave us high and dry. She does a great job, but she has a full-time, they both have full-time jobs and, uh, it gets challenging and they, you know, I think both of them said, well, I haven't had a weekend day off and, you know, six months type of thing, cause they're spending it doing Millville stuff. And even today, you know, I had an issue with, a modest issue in terms of the, the work that was done for these year-end transfers and, you know, within five minutes of, uh, pointing that issue out late in the afternoon, Tara had it fixed for me, you know, so. So I'm appreciative of what they've done for us and continue, will continue to do in the near term, but we need a longer-term solution and we're working on that. How's that?
Sounds good. And I guess the only thing I would add is I really appreciate them not just quitting and giving us a little bit of runway. And I, I think we are looking, working towards a solution for the collector, which is great. And they will come before this body. And then we'll see what we can do with the Town Accountant. Okay, our review of special town meeting and potential uses of stabilization resources, so. I guess I just wanted to thank everyone again who came to the special town meeting, because it was just four, three or four weeks after our annual town meeting. And we were able to fund our stabilization accounts and now we have one point five million dollars in stabilization. Aubrey Bono, who was here earlier, our finance chair, she pointed out to me that on June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, our cumulative stabilization accounts had about a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in them. So in five years, we have ten times that much money, which is unbelievable and we should all feel very proud of that. And one thing, and I did send a note to Chief Coop about this, cause I'm the public safety liaison on the Capital Planning Committee. And looking, and I think this will be something that Peter, who's the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, send out a note to all department heads and say, we're looking for investments that lower operational expenses. So one of the things that we struggle with at, in Millville is to cover our operating expenses with our operating revenues. This year, we did have a smidge of a surplus, which was just under ten thousand dollars, which is great. But that's not a really amazing cushion. We wanna get that cushion up to something. You know, I would love for it to be a hundred thousand dollars, so if something happens, like we have a bump in part-time fire department hours, we're like, oh, we have that twenty, thirty thousand dollars right here in our surplus of operating revenues and we're not kinda pulling from other places. So, that's all I had on that one. I don't know, Peter, if you had anything else?
No, I think that's a fair stat, no, 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 that's great. And you, you just reminded me, I gotta send that out, but I think that's, you know, that will segue into what we're about to talk about in the next item, which is, you know, in your, the ARPA, part of the, uh, agenda here. And the segue is that, um, it's thinking smart about, yes, we have the stabilization resources, but it's also really thinking bigger picture of what the needs are of a particular department and planning for that. And it, you know, rather than hitting on things piecemeal, so. You have on the agenda that there's been a request for ARPA funds for the fire hydrant system. I'm not, what's not on there is asking you to vote on that. It's more for informational purposes, as well as the chief is here and, you know, Steve Furnell was active in putting this memo together on this, you know, to talk about that, but the chief is also, you know, they've come forward with some other needs. For example, they wanna, you, you know, broaden the service capabilities of their EMTs with, uh, uh, I'll call it an EKG machine type of thing. And, you know, I did a little pushback on that, because that's when I say, we really need to look at the big picture here and, and identify what our true needs are and when we have them. And, you know, that's wearing my Capitol hat, but also sitting in this chair. So there's, there's all that, but it, so it's all part of this being smart about how we use the resources we have and also be planning for the real needs and let's be realistic, cause we're, you know, we're all in this together to, we're resource limited, but let's use them wisely, so that's really where we're at. The other, the other thing is, you know, in addition to that, we know we have, maybe we need a, a replacement water tank up at MES for fire suppression of the building. But the building, we might not, we'll get back maybe in five years and, you know, I, who knows? We just, so we, there are many pieces of the puzzle here to, to go for. But since we have this on the agenda, at least to have, you know, the other part of it is all of these things need to come before the Capital Committee first, before it's brought to you. The Capital Committee would weigh in and say, jeez, we think eighty-five thousand dollars, eighty-five and eight, eighty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight bucks is a good use of ARPA money and we voted and we recommend it. And now it's in the Board of Selectmen's hands to divvy out that money if you so choose, or some piece of it. And, you know, so we haven't done the capital analysis, Capital Planning Committee review of that.
So do you think it would, I know.
Well, they're here.
I know, they're here. You wanna have a quick conversation? Cause it, just as Peter said, you will need to go before Capital and kinda talk about, and then they'll vote and recommend and then come before us and then say Capital is unanimous and all the other good stuff. But I don't know if you wanna come up and talk about anything else?
No, but I'll, I'll just say that, you know, these guys are, you know, even, and Samantha, she's a big piece of the identification and explanation of their needs. And they're very responsive in that regard, uh, I'll just say that. So they're not, you know, they're not irresponsible. They're responsive and responsible about identifying their needs. How's that? I'm trying to be supportive, even though I don't wanna give you the money, you know?
Yeah, come on up.
Talk about the hydrant specifically?
Sure, yes, that's what we have on there.
So the deputy did go through and put together this memo, um, kinda addressing what we see as future upcoming needs for the hydrant system. We do have, what was it, seven hydrants that are.
Nine hydrants that need to be replaced at a cost of sixty-three twenty-two. And then one valve at a cost of sixty-one hundred-ish and five valves.
So, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, the, these hydrants all have their issues of some sort. They're not in a hun- hundred percent working.
Okay.
Some of the system is very old.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Some of the hydrants go back to the forties. The, um, and this doesn't take into account the, uh, the issues at the pump station itself.
Right.
What need to be addressed at some point in the near future as well. Which is a, a, you know, a big cost to swallow, yes, absolutely. Because the motor that runs that goes back to the sixties. It's a six-cylinder gasoline motor. So that's how antiquated part of our system is. Is that in order to get any decent pressure out of the system, or if we have a fire or something like that, we have to send someone up there to start the motor. Engage the pump, bring up the pressure. And it's a gasoline motor, so there's, we have a twelve-gallon tank. And then we have a, uh, twenty-gallon reserve tank to keep that full. In the meantime, while we're waiting for our mutual aid truck to come in, set up a draft in the pond and then feed the yard hydrant that's there with a decent pressure to give us water at the other end, whatever hydrant that we're, um, we're attached to. So that's the issue with that. And there's a lot of maintenance that goes along with that. So, um, but going back to the hydrant system, I took the, and it should have been, um, there was one that I forgot about, so there actually should have been ten hydrants on the, on the list, not nine, uh, which would have brought the price up a little bit more. But, um, in so doing all this, these are the ones that really, either they don't drain, they freeze. There's some that we can't get pots for anymore. So it's just a, a combination of all these things and, and then the valves in the streets, this, is a couple that every time we, we go to spin it, it leak water all over the place. And sometimes that creates a problem in the wintertime, so now you have ice. The one in particular is the one right out, right next to the, uh, post office on Bow Street, Bowen Central. That's the worst one. But then we also have, out of our operating budget, we're actually replacing one tomorrow with a, um, with a new valve.
So you typically did one a year or two a year? Has it varies?
Typically one, but we've tried to squeak in two if we can. Now with the cost of everything going sky-high, it's, it's tough. So.
How many hydrants do we have?
We have seventy-four.
Seventy-four hydrants, okay.
And, um, just to give you a little, um, history on this, we do maintain them all the time. We grease them. Whether we're greasing the hydrants, if they have grease fittings, or some of them take oil, not grease.
Yeah.
So what we do is instead of using motor oil or, or, um, like straight-grade oil from years ago, now we use cooking oil. So now it's better for the environment. And then the, uh, the threads themselves, where the caps are, those need to be greased. So then the caps come off nice and easily. We have a fire, we can get the valves on and charge the lines and, you know, hopefully water comes out the other end. So that's where we're at. end. So that's where we're at with, with this whole list of what I came up with. And this goes back to pretty much the last 25 years that I've been doing this and maintaining the system to try and keep everything running as smoothly as possible.
Yeah. So I think I'm, so Peter and I are both on capital plan, as I mentioned. So I would support this. Like we've had fires in town, like in recent memory. And so I would, I don't, I would feel awful if it was like, oh, this one's not working and someone's home is destroyed beyond where it should be because of lack of water. But again, I think so Peter's, as the chair is in charge of scheduling the meetings and putting together the agenda, it's his favorite thing to do. So he, this will be, he'll put it on the next agenda. You can come present us and then we'll recommend and then bring it back here. But I, you know, I would say it's a good use of funds, but we do like to go, anything over 10,000 dollars needs to go through capital.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Andrew? Sorry, I kind of like just moved over. Okay.
Oh, I joke about the pub house, but if he, he rises off into the sunset, I don't, maybe you've got guys here who know how to operate the valves and stuff. But if you think about one of those Frankenstein movies, there's valves and dials and I don't, you know.
There's, there's a lot to it. And.
It's bizarre.
Usually the fire department's not the ones that take care of these things. Usually you have a water department.
Right. Yeah.
Well, in Millville, we are the water department plus the fire department. So we, we wear many hats to, to try and keep the wheels spinning and, and everything operating as smoothly as possible.
And we do try to train our new personnel and car personnel on how to operate the system.
Oh, good.
It takes time.
Yeah.
I mean, it took me a long time to, to get to where I am.
Yeah.
You know, going back to the, the, the folks like John Dean and, and former Chief Malali and, you know, I learned a lot of this system, especially John Dean. He knew everything. And then even Arthur Kezl, going way back, he built part of the pump station. So all those guys there, it was great to know those people and, and learn from them. And now I try and, and we try and just spread it out with the rest of our people so that everyone knows. Because you never know, I get hit by a bus tomorrow and it's up in the air.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. So 9H. So we have a review, reviewing an open meeting law violation and we have a response that we have to review. So Jennifer Wing, I made a complaint against the Millville Board of Selectmen, specifically Jennifer Gill. And this is the text of the complaint. An agenda was posted for the June 7th, 2022 meeting with an agenda item for executive session. Per Massachusetts Journal Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss discipline or dismissal, or complaints or charges, charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. At the start of the meeting, video that is posted on Millville Access Cable slash YouTube, the chair opens the meeting and states that they will not be going into executive session. The person they were speaking of, Mr. Gerald Finn, was in the audience and was never given the option of open or executive session. As stated in the open meeting law guide, an executive session called for this purpose triggers certain rights for the individual who is the subject of the discussion. The individual has the right to be present through he or she may choose not to, though he or she may choose not to attend. The individual who is the subject of the discussion may also choose to have the discussion in an open meeting, and that choice takes precedence over the right of the public body to go into executive session. This seems to be in direct violation of open meeting laws and the rights of Mr. Finn. Her proposed action, she wants the public body to take, will be a public apology to Mr. Finn for their error. This should take place at a recorded open meeting and imprint with a local newspaper. And this was submitted on June 9th, later in the evening after the office hours were closed. So that's why we're able to add this under the 48 hour rule. And we actually had the attorneys review that as well to make sure we weren't breaking further rules and I wasn't racking up another open meeting law violation. So now the response from our attorney. Dear Ms. Benneden, this office serves as town council to the town of Millville, and this letter is in response to an open meeting law complaint filed against the town's Board of Selectmen Board by Ms. Jennifer Wing, a copy of which is enclosed complaint. The complaint was received on June 10th, 2022, attached to an email received at 9:37 PM on June 9th. The board reviewed the complaint and approved this response at its meeting on June 14th, 2022. In summary, the complaint alleges that the board improperly failed to offer a town official to have a complaint heard in executive session, allegedly in violation of Massachusetts General Law 30A, Section 21A. The board denies that it had committed any violation. As background, the board chair scheduled an executive session to consider a complaint regarding a particular town official, Gerald Finn, for the June 7th meeting. Mr. Finn was provided with the required written notice pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 30A, 21A, days prior to, oh, period. Days prior to the meeting, Mr. Finn informed the board chair and the town administrator that he would be unable to attend the meeting. When the meeting commenced, the chair announced that this agenda item would take place in open session instead. After that announcement, but before the board's deliberations, Mr. Finn did in fact arrive at the meeting and spoke during the deliberations. Mr. Finn did not object to the deliberation being held in open session, and he did not request that the board go into executive session. The complaint erroneously claims that Mr. Finn's rights were violated. When a board schedules an executive session under purpose one, it provides the individual notice that he may instead request that it be held in open session, and the board is required to honor that request. The converse is not true, however. If the board decides to hold the deliberations in open session, the individual does not have the right to require that the meeting take place in executive session instead. In addition, as noted above, Mr. Finn did not make any such request as he, and he participated in the discussion. Since the complaint fails to allege any violation of the open meeting law, no remedial action is required. And that's I, Brian Riley, our town attorney. So I don't know if I'm good with the answer from the attorney. I don't know if either of you have any amendments to that.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep. Okay. Then I will make a motion that we approve the response from KP Law written by Brian Riley to respond to the open meeting complaint from Jennifer Wing received June 10th, 2022. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Okay. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. And I guess the only other further comment I want to make is, because I've seen on social media that it's been alleged that I commit, commit many open meeting law violations. This is actually the first complaint that I've ever received. And I don't intend on committing any open meeting violations ever. I will say that I do make mistakes and not, I'm not perfect. And I would have absolutely no problem apologizing if I were to make a mistake. And if someone is diligently pursuing the quest of my mistake, they will be successful at some point. And I'm sure I will have to apologize and that will be fine. So, okay. So continuation update of boss policies and procedures. So that's actually on the calendar for the next meeting. So we'll skip that one. Border Selectmen Survey Update. So I have just around 50 respondents so far. So how we've been, I don't know if anyone's seen the video I posted on social media. So for all the respondents, I've been typing into a huge express, Excel spreadsheet. I put my initials and a number that corresponds to the row in the Excel spreadsheet. Because there's a lot, some of them, and Peter saw this one, they wrote like a very long letter about the Longfellow Building being very important to Millville and we should continue to, we should do everything we can to the town hall, as an example of our response. So I thought I would continue to kind of synthesize and analyze survey updates through the end of June. So if you want to get them here, you can do that. I did hear from one of the volunteers at the town hall that they had no way to get their survey into the town hall. If you want to message me on Facebook, I will go to your house and pick up your survey so that your voice can be heard. I would be happy to do that. And the only other thing I wanted to say is there was one comment because we asked about buildings, like what should we do with the Longfellow Building? What should we do the town hall? This and that. And someone said, I know why you're asking this question is because you're gonna, the school is coming off the, the MES building is coming off the.
Debt.
The debt exclusion. Thank you, Peter. I've been talking a lot and it's 10 o'clock. And it's coming off the debt exclusion. So I know you're going to sneak in another debt exclusion and raise my taxes again. I actually, we actually don't want to do that. I shouldn't say aye. It's all of us, not, we don't want to do that. And between stabilization accounts, which you saw are quite healthy, and the ARPA funds we got, I'm thinking we may not have to do that to take care of our buildings. So the town hall, the police station, the library, et cetera. So I'm, it's looking that way. I'm hoping that, and I'm hoping we can achieve that. Any other comments on the surveys?
One quick thing.
Yeah.
Could they use the drop box in front of the town hall?
Yes, that's where I've been getting almost all of them. So, but someone was still complaining that getting to the drop box was difficult for them. And I'd be happy to drive to your house. Everywhere in Millville is five minutes from my house. So streetlights update and policy discussion. So Peter, you had an update here?
Yep. So I met with Bob Moran, who's our national grid guy on the streetlights. And basically I think they're down to a dozen lights remaining to turn back on and convert to LED. So that's still ongoing. He's going to prepare a detailed list for me. So we'll hopefully have that for, we'll have that for the next meeting of what's turned on, what's turned off. Separately, there are what they call, and the turning off is really red capping. They put a red cap that blocks the photo, you know, the photo cell that turns it on and off based on the light. And that basically turns the light off. They call it red cap. So there are some red, so most of the Millville ones that we've been paying for that were turned off, they were red capped by being turned off, have been unread capped and they've been converted to LED. There are also some that were privately paid for, that have been, stopped being paid for by the private party. And so those are red capped. And so to the extent those are, he's going to identify what those are, then it will be for you all to decide, absent specific requests from individuals in the neighborhood, for you all to decide whether you, you know, you want to turn those on. And then it's a nominal cost of operation, basically. Separately, there may be poles on various streets that don't have any fixture whatsoever. And that's a separate cost and discussion and a thing for you all to consider. But the request probably should be, you know, I probably should be the central point on that. Bring it to you and say, here's where we're at with the various things on that. And those red caps, to the extent they remove the red caps, they would also convert to LED at the same time. Okay. To the extent people have outages, they have an 800 number to call those in. And that's 800-322-3223. So that's really all the update I have. I'll have more details for the next meeting. And we'll have Bob here, actually.
Yep. Perfect. Yeah. So that's one thing, because I'd been emailing Bob, Peter and I together have been emailing Bob quite a bit. And he was mentioning these red cap lights. And I didn't want Peter and I to make the decision just to assume that cost. I thought that's something we should see how much it is. I would like for us to assume that cost, to be perfectly honest, and to make sure all the lights are on. And then seeing that, how much that is, then I thought maybe next year, because I, like I have a neighbor who was over a little bit ago, and they said, I'd love to have a street light on my street, because they had no street lights on their street. So I don't know if we want to kind of see how much it is to get red capped everything on first, and then maybe take, turn on, add five lights a year or something like that. So we're not like, bam, street light budget. So it's like a modest kind of increase. And depending how much five, I'm guessing that five is affordable for us. Maybe it's two. Maybe it's none. I thought that's something we should decide together. Public Forum, you've all stayed for the long haul. Does anyone have any comments? Sure, Mr. Herto.
All right. I have two cents for the chiefs and two cents for the town. For the chiefs, earlier this year.
Can you, can you come up?
Oh, Richard Herto, 8 Rondan Road. Earlier this year, I had mentioned I had volunteered that possibly we could get cell towers or whatnot. And the two cents that I have for the two chiefs is, when I put up my cell tower in the town of Oxbridge, I was able to negotiate free for the town, public safety, the antenna to provide better service to the police and the fire department. If that happens, it's something we could keep in the back of our minds for the cell tower, if we can get that in there. Because it'd be zero expense for the town, it'd be the installer who would put that. And the other two cents that I have, you mentioned the Longfellow Building. When that was inspected way back when, I was building commissioner then, I went up in the attic of that building and there was a fire in there at one time. And all the rafters are charred and, in very poor condition. Then there's some asbestos in there. So for the town to consider rehabbing it or repairing it, it would be millions of dollars. So something for you to think about. I had made a suggestion that you could probably sell the building with a special permit for six units or something, and let the developer fix it at no cost. And it would then become taxable income for the town. That was the end of my four cents.
Okay. Well, the, well, just the millions of dollars, we're looking at maybe like half a million dollars, actually. 400,000.
With the roof and the asbestos and the lid paint.
Yep.
That's great.
I know. It's unbelievable. So we're, and they, they're still investigating, like it's still, so it could come back. Actually, we missed this whole thing. It's really 8 million dollars. Sorry.
That's right.
Like that, so that could absolutely still happen. But right now it's trending towards something that's affordable.
Great news.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Selectmen Reports, Richard? Oh, well, anyone else for public forum? I'm sorry. No. Okay. I'm sorry, Richard. Selectmen Reports.
I have nothing besides the whole controversy with the playground, which seems to surfaced on the social media, but other than that.
Yes. So Peter and I are engaged with Kevin. And I will say that a local business person also reached out and said they'd be happy to clean up the park, which I thought was really nice. I love it when people come forward with solutions instead of just complaints. So those are the couple of solutions we have moving forward. Andrew?
One quick thing for the senior center, because they have a billboard inside, like this senior, the COA has it. But would it make sense to have one outside so that they could post, you know, like town meeting warrants and that type of stuff?
The constable could access it and post it.
There you go.
There we go.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
The constable would love that.
I think he would. He'd like his own board.
And then the only thing I would add to that is, and I need to speak with Tim since it's about cable, and that's why I know he'll hear me right now. I, I see a lot of like issues with service around cable. And I know we have ARPA funds and things like that. And I was wondering if we partnered with the cable provider and said if we made some strategic investments, could that help improve service in the town? Now, I don't know if they're like, sure, we can do that for 20 million dollars. And then it's obviously a no. But if there was something that was affordable, I thought that should be a discussion that we have at cable meeting and I'll get with Tim and see if we can be added. If I can attend a meeting or if all of us want to attend, certainly we can post an agenda. And actually, speaking of all of us attending a meeting, the Board of Selectmen will be attending and it has been posted, thankfully. The BBT School Committee on Thursday at 6:00 PM. I believe our entire conversation will be in executive session, but this was a follow-up conversation regarding the activity of Mr. Finn at the May 16th meeting. So all three of us are able to attend, which I think is great.
Okay, three things. There you go. Segue on the internet and cable. Town Hall's been experiencing intermittent cutouts of our internet throughout the day for the last week or so. It's exceedingly frustrating. We've had charter folks in here, they've run a new 310 foot line from the pole. They've replaced, I'll call it a hoopy scoop out there as well. They've replaced the line into our system. They've, two guys were here all day today. And they walked away concluding that it's somehow internal, it's not their system. At the same time, the cable advisory committee member, Jack Moran, who's very knowledgeable about cable, he was in the industry and he's assisted, he's offered to assist them in their diagnosis. So they don't think they need that assistance, but it's been kind of him to offer. And so anyway, we're trying to figure out the problem on that. One of the solutions may in fact wind up being equipment in that room there and principally a server. And you all had approved a $10,000 server replacement using ARPA funds. That might not be enough, but I don't know that yet. I'm just saying. So that might have to be our solution. It might have to happen more quickly because phone calls are dropped. We're on a voice over internet protocol thingy. And so it's frustrating as all get out, though. I'll just say that. I talked briefly about Metacomet, when Chief Coop was up here, you know, the challenges he's been having. And they are working on the tower, which, you know, segues a little bit from what Richard's talking about. The tower they do put up, we think will allow for, you know, just phone service, cell phone service providers as well to get up on that thing. Just, uh, phone service, cellphone service providers as well to get up on that thing.
Chief Coop, would you like?
Yeah, and so, and, and the governance, as I say, I'm the clerk. I don't know if that means I have to take minutes, cause that would not be a good thing, but I am the clerk of Metacomet's Board of Directors. We are essentially, each town administrator of the six towns are really five voting members. Are like you are here, the Board of Selectmen. So, uh, it'll be interesting, cause now I actually have a seat at the grown-ups table there, uh, starting July first. Uh, I spent, uh, three hours today with our, uh, water consultant. And two hours, two of those hours were up at MES, uh, traipsing through the backwoods to the pump station. And looking at where the, the beavers are living and the, you know, there's a nice little pond there and so forth. And our operator, Bob Ferrari, whom I think some or all of you have met in the past, uh, also showed up there. And we had great discussions about what we did, we, they did a water sample of the standing water there, cause the question is, how is that water? Really cause problems with the water four hundred and fifty feet down where the bedrock well is, right? Uh, and then we went and looked at all the equipment, and one of the solutions to the challenge they're having. Because we can't identify the source of the challenge, uh, we can't cause and affect it. But one of the solutions that has been on the radar there is a carbon filter system added to the system that has. And it will provide for even better quality of the water and less, uh, challenges of them managing the disinfectant byproducts. So it's a bunch of, you know, there I was with these scientists today trying to keep up, but any event, um. That's all part of it, and I did take them on a little drive through around the town to see Kempton Road, we saw Providence Street. We saw, you know, uh, where the, uh, tower is, uh, of Blackstone, just thinking about potential. In, inflows of water to the town, and also we drove around looking at hy- hydrants. And all the guy would talk about was, uh, pressure, was the key to the hydrant system, you know, having adequate pressure. And that's the main thing you gotta have, and I know that Chief and, and, um, you know, uh, Deputy Chief. Has talked, Fernando has talked about, uh, pressure as a challenge there, so anyway, uh, at least we got the, a smart guy on our team. Certainly smarter than me on that stuff. So that's really all I have, the rest of it, we've, gonna do a lot of stuff tonight.
Chief Coop wanted to. See one last thing.
So I just wanted to clarify with Richard, because I was just talking with Chief Liat also. The, the tower that's outside of Seven Oakway or?
Right, the back of my house, yeah, that's in the town of Uxbridge.
Yeah, I know.
When that was installed, we negotiated an antenna that was put on that. At the expense of the cell tower company, that would benefit public safety in the town of Uxbridge. So if that's done here, if that materializes, we could negotiate. The town could negotiate the installation of an antenna that would provide service for the public safety of the town. So it's, it's not something that's gonna happen tomorrow, but something, food for thought. That if, if we get together and we're able to negotiate something, it could happen in the spring of twenty-three.
Sure. This is oddly coincidental, I was just speaking to Roy about this, I am in communication with Modular. And I suggested both towers what we could do, and wondering what the timeline would be in case of an emergency. He thought Blackstone was better for our area, basically, and he thought about, uh, Uxbridge in the past. But he did, um, did ask me to find out the contact information for at least the Blackstone Tower. But this is gonna be easy since I now have it for the Uxbridge Tower, so that's gonna be very helpful, I think.
Bill, the tower that's on my land is at the highest elevation in the Blackstone Valley. And I can email you with the company that owns the lease on that, and. He could go from there, but that's, that's one of the highest elevations in the Blackstone Valley.
What is the height on that, if you know?
Don't remember offhand, but I have the maps that show the elevation, ground level, and then it's one-sixty.
Maybe I could start by tomorrow, or?
Uh, yeah, make it, tomorrow's what, Wednesday?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll look for it tonight, put it aside, or I can take a picture. Sure, you have my cellphone number, right?
Ah, sure.
Okay, so I will take a picture of it and send it to you, or swing by, and I'll dig up that drawing showing. The base elevation and then the height is one-sixty.
All right, sounds good. Um, we already covered items not reasonably anticipated four hours prior to meeting. Our next regular meeting will be July eleventh at seven PM. Um, we've already had three meetings in June, and they've all been lovely, so I think we're good. Um, so, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you, Andrew.
Seconded.
Thank you, Rich. Any discussion? Really nothing else to say? Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay, thank you all, thank you all for staying.